There we go.
Great, so we have everybody on the Concord School Committee among us. So I'll call the meeting to order. It is April 27, 2021, and we are being recorded. And we will begin with a roll call, please.
Anderson present.
Booth present.
About present.
Is that present?
Brady present.
All right, thank you. Our first order of business is the Concord Middle School. Things have changed a little bit since I communicated with our building committee chairs, Dawn Gariello and Pat Nelson. And notably, there was a meeting on the 15th of April by the middle school committee, followed by a meeting last week of the Concord FinCom that produced some requests to the building committee. And I think those will frame part of the meeting of the building committee this Thursday. In the absence of that exchange, FinCom and building committee, I think this would simply have been an update. And I'm guessing Pat and Dawn would have entertained any questions or comments. It didn't have the specificity that now it has. The best way I can characterize the meeting on the 15th is that the, and this is my telling, the committee made it a bit difficult for the FinCom, if not indeed the community, by perhaps confusing people as to whether a new budget number was escalation due to the passage of time, which was one communication we received from the town manager's office, or escalation due to further consideration of community requests for additional gym and auditorium. I think there were very clear statements to both effects, leaving people perhaps in a bit of a quandary. The specific change that occurred on April 15th is that the 90 million-plus estimate of 2019 manifested in a vote, a near-unanimous vote by the building committee, to the effect that the not-to-exceed budget would be $108 million, that the project would not exceed the 15% limit on impermeable surface, and that that new number would enable the design team, or architects if you will, to go back and examine whether the gym and auditorium could be expanded, and if so, how, intentionally without a lot of specificity on what that meant. There was no particular mandate for what that might look like. We do know that the 143,000-square-foot building in the space summary and the $99.2 million budget was, to I believe everybody's understanding, in accord with the ed plan. But things have reopened, or at least specific parts of the conversation have reopened subsequent to that adoption of the 143,000-square-foot dimension and the related space summary that went with it. Generally, what I might have anticipated tonight would be simply to ask people if they had questions or comments or opinions to share with our chairs of the building committee. But I think we can be a little more directive and ask, are there opinions from this committee that Heather and I should hear from you? Because in two days, we're going to be looking at the building committee agenda that I think focuses, not singularly, but in a really specific way, on the finance committee's request. And that request was that the building committee revisit, quote, "revisit" the vote for the $108 million with their understanding and their rationale behind that request. So I think that's where we stand. I'm curious if others on the school committee first, and then building committee, Pat and Dawn next, think that's an accurate telling of where we stand right now.
Court, I'll jump in quickly. I think I agree with you that it's important that we get all the school committee members, you know, any input and comments here. I also think, though, it might be important for us to ask Dawn and Pat, or Dawn or Pat, whoever wants to step up, to give us kind of a rendering of that meeting. I know you just characterized it as the building committee, I think, not exactly your words here, but created some confusion. And I don't know that I took it as confusion, but I think we at least need to let Dawn or Pat kind of outline that decision in a way that they saw it coming out that maybe is not confusing before we open it up to feedback. Does that sound fair? I just think it's important for them to be able to speak.
How about you do it, Heather, since this is a school committee conversation, and you are one of our liaisons, and you have a different perspective on what happened? Are you able to do that?
Sure, I'm happy to.
Can I just ask the school committee to consider, Dawn and I are here as the chairs of the school building committee, which, you know, serves the school committee. And I think I would like the opportunity to sort of just give a presentation of where we're at with the committee, and then hear, and definitely then hear from the school committee reactions to that. I would like to do that.
So I shared with you my framing of it. We've heard requests that Heather frame it her way. Pat has suggested that she frame it also. So I think we're going to collect multiple opinions. And that's sometimes the way reality gets sorted out. Heather, do you want to start, and then we'll move to Pat?
Sure, I'll just give kind of my quick, high-level impressions. When you were saying that the budget number got moved either because of escalation or because of gym and auditorium feedback, I didn't feel like it was an either-or that necessarily was confusing. I felt like, as a natural part of this process, we had gotten a lot of input on the space that we had been discussing. Because of that, we had to look at the budget numbers, and we met back and looked at the specifics of what we discussed at town meeting. And I don't know that it was all a matter of escalation, but when you look at the numbers that we discussed at town meeting with escalation, it brought us to a potential upper end of 108. And so the town manager's suggestion was just that we move it to that cap, not that we're necessarily moving our building budget to 108, but that we move our cap to what those numbers back at town meeting would have meant today. And then we look at the gym and auditorium, and what makes sense and what is realistic, and make sure it doesn't go over that. I don't necessarily imagine that means that it's necessarily going up to that, but we'll look at our options. So anyway, that was just my take on it, which was that we were taking that feedback, considering it, and looking at the numbers that were originally discussed, and adjusting our cap based on that. But really, I do think, so that's kind of my, that's my general take, I won't go into more details, but I do feel like it's important that Dawn or Pat give us kind of an update or presentation. I thought of this as a listening session, like we've done with lots of other groups. And with all of those groups, we always present something first, and then take feedback and comment and question. So I do think it's important that Dawn or Pat kind of present to us where the building committee is from the chair's perspective.
Well, they certainly can do that, and we're going to be mindful of the time.
Definitely.
I did reference confusion, and I will cite where that comes from for me. Mr. Crane submitted a memo to us that reads, "Construction cost escalations on similar projects are between 6% and 8% per year." Semi-colon, "If the project is bid in 2023, the project cost would be in the range of 98 to 108 million." The budget discussion and the motions began with $110 million recommendation that was then reduced to 108. Dawn, you'll recall you confirmed Mr. Fischelis's 110, then 108 motion by asking, "Was this due to the larger gym and auditorium?" To which you said yes. So to me, that represents a change in numbers based on, A, escalation, Stephen Crane, B, a larger gym and auditorium, Mr. Fischelis. So I stand by my claim that I think some people are appropriately confused, meaning I think it's legitimate that people are confused, and this deserves some clarification. So Pat, if you want to start on that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, I gotta say, one of the best things about Zoom is that I can go back and look at meetings and, you know, get the actual facts and details of the meeting, because it's some, it was, there was a lot of information in that meeting. And there, no question about it, Court, I think that some people are confused about it, and seeking clarification on the escalation is an exercise we're definitely going to be, you know, looking at at our Thursday meeting. But it still, to me, kind of came down to, or what I, my sense of the meeting was, that we as a committee needed to find a place to set a cap on the budget. That up until that meeting, we were kind of operating without a cap on the budget other than numbers that were discussed at the 2019 town meeting, nothing was put into the article. Numbers that were discussed in order to put out the RFS for the contractors. So we looked back, as Heather, I think, explained very clearly, we looked back at that 2019 discussion to kind of see what the community, what numbers the community was given at that time when they voted to approve the feasibility study. So that said, we kind of looked at that. We've been getting lots of community input, as you know, around the auditorium and the gym. And so we kind of used that as a framework to give us some barriers, some edges to work within. And so we settled on the, we voted on the 208 million. Now, that was with the caveat that we would be looking at what makes the most sense for the middle school, what is the most reasonable thing to be doing for the middle school, what is consistent with the ed plan, and what is consistent with community needs. But that it wasn't set as a target. It was set as, well, this is, these are numbers that had been kind of thrown out in 2019. Let's see what we could do within these numbers. We have heard over and over and over again from the finance committee that they do not want to see this project exceed 100 million. And that's the job of the finance committee, to express what they feel is an appropriate burden on the citizens. So we will also be taking that feedback in as we look at what we might do within that 108 million, where we, how high we want to go, based on all the information that we can gather from all the places I mentioned earlier. So at the meeting, yep, we did go to 108 million, we voted for that. It was a target, and it was with the caveat that on Thursday, we would be looking at all of those options for the gym and the auditorium. We will also be looking at some new information that a member of the finance committee and our finance committee liaison has developed, Dean Banfield, for his understanding of escalation. Because really, at the end of the day, what we want to get at is, what do we think this project is going to cost? And what do we think we can do within that number? With that number, what the base project is going to cost, with the, what you as a school committee voted on for the education plan, and then what more might we want to do? I don't know if that's any clearer than anything, you know, that anyone else might say about that meeting, but that was essentially what we were focusing on, and that's how we got to that vote.
I certainly agree with that, and I think that your reference to the 108 as a do-not-exceed and also as a target really speaks to our uncertainty about whether it is a do-not-exceed or a target.
Well, I think that it was, Court, excuse me, I think it, for me, and maybe that's what, where the confusion is, but for me, it wasn't confusing at all. It was very clear. It was a do-not-exceed number and not a target.
Okay, well, you did reference it as target, and...
I said that it wasn't a target.
And we did have a 90 million that became an 80 to 100 million, and we thus built to 100 million. So, I mean, these are genuine and legitimate questions that I think bring us to the broader question of whether this community can bring this school forward. This project started at this table with this school committee, so we're deeply invested in it.
Sorry, Court, may I say something?
Certainly.
Thank you. And it's related. I guess I just want to say that the only thing that was voted at town meeting was the 1.5 to study this project.
That's correct.
Right? And I'm sorry if there's kids in the background. But that was all that was voted. There was no budget set. There were numbers that were loose, that were put out there based on unknowns, right? So as a professional that designs buildings, I'm not designing this building, I'm not saying this is, I'm just giving some perspective. You have to study something in order to start to refine it and get numbers put on it, and then put it in front of a community to vote on. So what was presented at town meeting was, as you likely know, because it came out of the school committee, was really loose on a Fine Gold Alexander study that was done years ago, that made some assumptions that, you know, in order to even put a number out there to study, it's hard to put numbers out there because people grab hold of them. So that was the 90 million. And then it said on, you know, on Article 14, it talked about a 2019 feasibility. Here we are, 2021, so two years later, we're still in feasibility. It talked about escalation costs after one year. On top of that, it could go to 92.5 to 97.5, and then two years on top of that, 95 to 105. By the time we get to the end of SD, we're going to be almost three years out from that. So the idea of escalation is that, as we all know, nothing is stagnant. Nothing ever holds in time, like the cost of construction. If you go look at the MSBA chart, that they have so much data, it goes up and up and up. So escalation is a crystal ball. No one knows the answer. We don't know what construction costs are going to be when this goes out to bid, hopefully in 2023. But the idea was that those numbers were looked at as possibilities, like without having studied the project. So what was approved at town meeting was a study of the project. So since then, we've gone through early feasibility, we've gone through the educational program, which you all are deeply invested in, and thank you for approving and getting involved in that. It's critical that you guys are behind the educational plan and support it, and it sounds like that has pretty broad support, which we're appreciative of. But what came of that was some increase in size from the assumed building that was put out there at 2019, right? And that's for good reason. And as you know, Court, we in the design subcommittee scrutinized and looked at, can spaces be shared? Do we need this many spaces? We were really working hard to try and right-size the building, which I think we've done, to be honest with you. We've right-sized it for the education, yet allowed for flexibility of the future, which is critical when you're designing a 50-year building. So the 90 was an assumption based on having not studied anything. The 80 to 100 was just for the RFP. That was just to put a number out there, to hire an OPM and a designer, to say, "We think it's going to be somewhere in here. We don't know, we haven't studied it yet." So here we are in feasibility, and to right-size the building is 99, numbers are all over my head, but it's 99-ish, just under 100, for the 143,000. When we put that out there to the community, you know, we basically said, "Here's the size of the building." We were flooded with information from the community and feedback from the community saying, "The auditorium's too small, the gym's too small, we want more, we're willing to pay more." And part of our scope is to engage the community and listen. And so that's where we were. So we're saying we could get the building right-sized at 100. So what does that do now that we have this community feedback that we can't ignore? This is a community building, it's affecting all of us that live here and pay taxes here. So then we need to look at what's right for that building, recognizing we don't have a budget, nothing was ever voted. So let's vote on a not-to-exceed budget, and then figure out the right-size auditorium and gymnasium that's correct for Concord. And does that mean it's the largest and the biggest? Probably not. Does it mean that we may end up where the ed plan says that we need as far as educational spaces? Maybe, but it's our committee's charge to study it, which is basically what that 108 allows us to do. So from my perspective, that, those are the official votes, the 1.5 to study it. We're studying it, that's where we are. The 90 was a number, a ballpark. Honestly, it wasn't a bad guess. It's not terrible. And then the 80 to 100 was just a range that was put out there for the request for proposals to hire professionals. And as a professional, I've never once seen an RFP that's exact, because no one has a crystal ball, and often it's a range. And sometimes it exceeds a range by two times, because they study it and say, "Oh, it needs to be something way more than we imagined." Or it's at the low end of it, because they realize, "Hey, our building actually kind of works, and we're going to look at just fixing the spaces that don't." So there's a huge range of opportunities when you study a project, and to get it right at the RFP level, like, that was just a range. If you go back and read the meeting minutes, we all were saying, "It wants to be a range." What are we comfortable saying? So I just want to share that perspective as a professional, as a designer, what's been voted and where we are. So the 108 is absolutely a not-to-exceed. We're not going to go over it. Hopefully, we're closer to 100, and we can get some community spaces in there that, you know, we can gain broad support from the general community. So thank you. That's my perspective on where we ended up, you know? And honestly, I don't have the answer on the community space. That's why we're listening. And in a perfect world, we had asked that this be a listening session before that meeting, because we were trying to get input from select board, FinCom, school committee, to be able to inform that vote. It's just we weren't able to get on the agenda until today. So thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here, and I do want to turn to my colleagues in a minute. I do want to, however, first, Dawn, state it right here, that the design subcommittee didn't wait for the space summary to be approved to then pay attention to athletic interests, drama interests, music interests, or financial stability interests in this town. We were sensitive to them from day one. The possible implication that we woke up to the fact that we had these constituencies only after we hit $100 million, or 99.2 to be exact today, today's number, or 142,995 square feet, is erroneous. We've been exceedingly sensitive to those constituencies throughout that design process. We know that those are interests that run deep in this town. And that's why I reference this as a reopening of these discussions, because I think they were very real many months ago. So I would like to turn to our colleagues, if you do have comments. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but you know that we have four members of the central administration staff on this committee as voting members. You have two of your representatives, Heather and myself, and a number of other people on the committee. And the item on Thursday morning is going to be some form of a look at this FinCom presentation from Mr. Banfield. It's going to be brought forth again in some form, followed by a discussion. And if you have questions or sentiments that Heather and I should hear, they're not going to bind us. We've got to act in our, what we believe in the best interest of the project on Thursday morning, but we do want to hear them.
Well, I'll start off. I have been paying close attention regarding the project scope, the escalation, that discussion in the financing, even the discussion at the select board meeting yesterday afternoon was confusing, very confusing, I'll say it. And even Carrie LaFleur said the numbers on her initial estimates were wrong. So she has to redo them, so, in terms of the escalation cost. So I'm going to request that the building committee have a finance subcommittee meeting and try to straighten this all out, because the community needs to get a really clear, solid financial picture on, you know, where we thought the escalation was in 2019, because that's a constant question, and then where we think the escalation is today. Even in the, let's put aside any project, you know, enlarging the scope in any way. Is that $99 million solid? I just want to be sure that we think it is. Another thing is, I listened carefully to the CM@Risk discussion, and I'm going to request that, did anybody on the committee or staff reach out to our neighboring towns who did CM@Risk with a lot of sustainability built in? Active Boxboro, which is currently in midst of it, and Lexington, which I think had a pretty successful project? And ask them, you know, did it cost them more? Did it save them money? I really think it's important that we get another point of view from a party who did a building nearby with similar elements. And AB is in the middle of it, I guess. I don't think they even put a shovel in the ground yet, maybe they're close. The one other thing I think we need to clearly understand is, we're very unique, we're going without the MSBA. We're probably for going at least $20 million in reimbursement. Maybe it's a little bit still, it's a lot of money, right? So I think we have to be more careful with our money and our expenditures as a town. So that's all I have for now.
All right, thank you, Cynthia. Either questions or comments for Heather and I to bring forward, or anything you want to address toward Pat and Dawn? Alexa?
Sure, I mean, I'll just sort of give sort of where I sort of stand personally on the direction that we're going. So I, you know, I've been going to all these building committee meetings, some of the subcommittee meetings as well, and I haven't personally experienced confusion, but I recognize how it could be depending on, you know, what meetings you've been to and what you've attended and all of that. But sort of where I net out on this is, I thought it was wise to escalate the budget to 108. I've listened to sort of both sides of this debate, but ultimately, I found that the arguments in favor of moving this escalation to 108 are sort of more compelling at the end, especially if it means that we have more flexibility in studying whether we can, to borrow Dawn's phrase, right-size some of these non-academic, if you will, facilities, the gym and auditorium. I've lived in Concord all but seven years of my life. I was here as like an adult taxpayer when we did Alcott in '04, and Willard, and I don't know, '08, or whenever that was, and the high school in 2010. So I do think that we have consistently been conservative with our buildings. All of our buildings seem to have undersized gymnasiums. All of our buildings seem to have undersized gymnasiums, not quite adequate auditoriums. And I think that they do have some, I don't know, detrimental effects in how that we deliver extracurriculars and the ability for the community to utilize these spaces. So, I don't know, this will be a building that's supposed to last for generations. I do think it is worthwhile to reflect on what some people consider these past mistakes and build a building that can deliver like a holistic education. I mean, we all know that for our students to be successful, I said this, I think, in the last meeting. We know that we have to deliver these kids opportunities inside and outside of the classroom. And we know that the education that we deliver does do that. It extends beyond our classroom. So to continue to excel, I think we have to have the right spaces to do that. And what I'm personally struggling with is, as an elected member, I feel like on the one hand, you're sort of duty-bound to represent the citizen taxpayers. On the other hand, on this committee, you're duty-bound to represent and advocate for students. So sometimes I feel like, and maybe this is one of those times, sometimes those two duties can be in conflict. And they don't necessarily align, but even in this situation, I'm not entirely sure that this is a conflict here because when I think of Concord and I think of a town where people flood here buying homes over and over and over again. And what they're really buying here might not even be so much a home as what they're kind of buying is their children's education. We see that time and time again, and in no time certainly more than now. And like anything else, if people are coming here for that infrastructure, this educational infrastructure, we have to not only maintain those investments, but like improve them as well. So I feel like doing this properly is a way for us to essentially improve our investments. And I feel like the ship has sailed, right, on this 100 million-ish dollars, which represents like the $1,000 average tax increase to the building, or sorry, to like each taxpayer's annual bill. So like what we're really talking about with this 108 is $45. So, I don't know. Again, I just, I feel like, I don't know. I quoted her last time, but I go back to Carlin Reed at the select board and like, "To be penny-wise and pound foolish just does seem, I don't know, foolish." And I do think that you guys have done this the right way and the process has gone along nicely. And, you know, community input is coming in and, I don't know, I support what you guys have been doing. I think that the vote last, or two weeks ago in the committee meeting was the right one, and that's where I net out. Not known for brevity, guys, sorry.
No, that was very clear. Thank you. Thank you, Alexa. I'm watching the time. I know Dawn has another meeting coming up, but I think we're okay. Fatima?
Yes. Okay. Well, first, I want to thank Dawn and Pat and the whole building committee for all the time and the energy that you're putting into building our next middle school. I really appreciate every ounce of effort and time that you put into this. And I want to begin with, I'm going to echo some of the sentiments or the responses that came from the chairperson of the finance committee in response to the penny-wise and pound foolish. We're not talking about pennies, we're talking about $100 million. So, and I personally think that $100 million is very generous to our students. The tax burden is difficult to sustain for many families in Concord. So increasing it is going to make a lot of lives difficult. In terms of advice, when we're taking feedback from different sides in our town to move forward with the planning of this building, I personally would choose to listen to our finance committee rather than our architects since in terms of the direction they want to go, for instance, the construction delivery method or the escalation costs, because their purposes are different. The finance committee is looking out for the interest of the taxpayers and also wants a good quality building. The architects have a different purpose, a different goal, and that's fine. But I worry when we talk about, you know, we need to trust the architects on this. I would be cautious and trust those in town that know finances and can steer us in a sustainable direction, at least financially. The other concern that I have, when we ask community members whether they are willing to pay more taxes for a better building. And then if we base our decision on that, that's a concern for me. That's not how we decide to raise taxes. Some of us, you know, some of us may want to raise taxes, maybe afford to raise taxes, but not everybody has responded. And again, as the finance committee pointed out, perhaps more than two-thirds of the families that live in Concord, of the taxpayers in Concord, do not have children in school. And they may not want to pay more taxes for a building that's going to go over $100,000. Perhaps my last point is, I know this has been a very passionate or emotional conversation when it comes about the, to the spaces that are going to be included and the size of the different spaces of our building. I often hear the term or the phrase "community center," "community space." It is a middle school. We need, I think, to remind ourselves that we are building a middle school. So that, I think, is important for me because if we frame it as a community center, then yes, it justifies going over $100 million. But when the finance committee recommends a $100 million budget, they're talking about a middle school. And I think I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima. Dawn?
Can I just thank you for those comments? Can I just respond to the design bid build CMAR comment that was made?
Certainly.
Because I don't think the finance committee weighed in on that, just for clarity. They only spoke about the budget.
Yes, you're right. You're not.
Yeah. No, I just want to be clear because I don't think we got feedback from them on that. And we didn't go into that vote. That was an additional vote that was taken at the April 15th meeting. And happy to give an update on that if that's something you're interested in hearing. We were planning on it, but this discussion has led us down the budget conversation, which is valuable. So I don't want to derail anything, but I don't think we've heard from the finance committee. And just to the point of trusting the architects and the owners, project managers, we hired them to give us advice and be professional. So I do trust them in the sense that they're working for us. And our, you know, our town's best interest is, should be, you know, the advice that they're giving us. So if we can't trust them, then I'm concerned because we're paying them 1.5 million per the town meeting vote in 2019. So.
I would offer up, communities that use a construction manager don't do it because they mistrust their teams. They do it because they want the extra risk management. It's not born of mistrust. So I don't want anybody to take that away.
Okay. I'm just responding to what was said. So, I mean, I'm, from where I sit, I mean, they're the professionals. They do this every day for a living, every day. So, you know, they gave us advice and as a committee, we vetted it, listened to community input on it, vetted it some more, and then voted. So, and it, you know, in the end, I think it was 11 to 6 to go design bid build.
That is correct. Yeah. I'm mindful of the time. We've gone over a little bit. I think we have focused on budget and scope escalation appropriately because that's what we're going to be hearing on Thursday when.
Court, can I just make one more comment?
Yes, please.
All right. So I just want to, I feel like the parking issue is sort of getting pushed aside. These will be like one-off events, it's not going to be a big deal. You know, we'll figure it out, park up and down Old Marlboro. I just drove by Sanborn last weekend and the parking lot was at least half-full, just with Babel's doing soccer. So if we start having, you know, a lot of theater events and gym events, we're going to have a constant parking problem at that site. And I just think it's not, there's no study of it. It's just, I think to say it's a one-off, it's not going to happen very often, is disingenuous and dangerous, in fact. So I really think you have to think of that as a plan for it, not say it's not going to be a big deal. Because it is a big deal and that road is already not safe. So I don't think you could say, oh, you know, it's only going to be the spring play. If you build a big theater, it's going to get used more frequently.
Point well taken. Yeah, and I think that's under active consideration of the building committee. Those considerations about parking and usage and large events.
Because the one thing I really don't hear in the plan is the outdoor spaces. I've been asking for it for a while. And for example, the cross-country and track programs are certainly the most, the biggest population of the middle school, after-school activity. There's no, I mean, you'll get the numbers, Lori can get them for you, but it's maybe 100 sometimes for cross-country or at least 80, I would say. And compared to basketball, it's much more highly subscribed. And I'm just wondering what we're going to do with the cross-country course? Is that going to go down for, you know, a couple of years? That's fine. But, you know, we just need to set, is that in the project, is it not? You know, those kinds of considerations. So I think we haven't done a real, we haven't really, I've heard not a real needs assessment. We're hearing from special groups and some groups just don't have a strong organization like others. So I think we have to think of everybody. Thanks.
Just quickly on timing, my understanding was that the outdoor pieces come a little bit later. Is that correct, Dawn and Pat?
I was just going to ask if I could respond to that. Yes, as we move into schematic design, there'll be a lot more information on that. I think there have been some budgetary assumptions and that includes outdoor learning spaces, outdoor activity spaces, and I can't speak specifically to the cross-country path. But if that's a priority coming out of the, you know, the user meetings as far as physical PE and gymnasium, you know, athletics, that absolutely can be part of those budgetary assumptions. And we'll see more of that as we move into schematic design. So, but I completely agree with you on that.
I mean, it got left behind in the high school project just because that group doesn't have a loud voice.
Yeah. I cut through the one over near the high school all the time, so.
Didn't get rebuilt until like two years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I want to thank Pat and Dawn for joining us. Want to thank our Carlisle members for your patience. I think we're going to wrap this conversation, if that's acceptable. I think Heather and I have heard some perspectives and concerns. I don't mean that in a pejorative way at all that we can bear in mind as we go forward with the building committee. So thank you for that. With that, I want to turn it over to Sarah to convene the joint school committees, please.
Hi.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Pat.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Sarah. Thank you for having us.
For coming. So it's 5:16. I'd like to call the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to order. With a roll call, please.
Anderson present.
Who's present?
Present.
I said present.
Mostaki present.
Brady present.
Wilson present. Great. Thanks. This evening, we do not have a student update. They will be with us the next time. They are looking forward to giving an update on the full return, but felt that there hasn't been much that happened over break. So we'll see them on May 11th and as always, look forward to having them here. And so now we can move to public comment. If it's your first time here and you want to make a comment, or well, in any event, if you want to make a comment, go to the participants button and raise your hand. We'll call on you in the order in which we see the hands raised. Please state your name and your address when you begin. And please try to keep comments to about three minutes. You'll get a reminder if you're getting close to the end of your comment time. And if you've spoken on a topic before, please try to keep your comments even briefer. And we look forward to hearing from the community now. Are there any public comments?
I don't believe so, Sarah.
I don't think so. Okay. So with that, let's go on to recognitions, the CCHS Green Team. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Yes, so there's about five students. I'm Priscilla Guiney and I'm the advisor to Green Team, and thank you so much for inviting us. And the students want to present a project that we've been working on all year and we're really passionate about. It's the native pollinator garden project. So we have some slides and we will share those with you and we're looking to seek your approval. We've gone through a number of steps and we'd like to share what we've been doing so far.
So Ms. Guiney, I can share a screen if that works for you.
If you want to do it, that's fine. I can help prompt who will be speaking. That sounds great.
Awesome. Can you all see my, my screen? Okay, so this is our presentation on our plans for a pollinator garden at CCHS so far. So we'll have a few different students presenting today. Okay, so I wanted to start with what is a native pollinator garden? So in general, it is using native plants to attract endangered pollinator species, a variety of pollinator species. So this includes bees, butterflies, birds are also pollinators. And our goal with this garden would be to educate the community on the importance of pollinators and ways they can support pollinators and also to help the environment at the same time. Why is a pollinator garden important? So I think that this graph is very telling. We can see that most of these native bee species are, have decreased in numbers from their historical numbers. So we're seeing a serious issue. And in particular, these two species, as you can see, the half-black bumblebee and the golden northern, I believe, are particularly at risk. So we would hope to choose plants that would cater to these species. And one reason why we think that there is this decreasing in native pollinator numbers is that many restoration projects don't actually provide plants that support a range of pollinator species. Certain pollinators can only use certain flowers or grasses. And so many restoration projects have not provided the adequate type of plants that some of these endangered species are needing and which is why, one of the reasons why they're seriously struggling. And one more thing about pollinators is we need them for the biodiversity of the whole ecosystem and supporting the whole ecosystem. Apparently, a rough statistic is about a third of the food you eat couldn't be produced without pollinators pollinating it. So another reason why. So another reason why pollination is important. Yeah, so just a little bit on our work so far. We've met with a few experts, which include Delia Kay, who's the Concord Town Director of Natural Resources, Matt Morris, who's part of the Native Pollinator Task Force for the Sudbury Valley Trustees, Dr. Brian Windmiller, who's the Director of the Grassroots Wildlife Conservation, and Mark Hanson, who's a part of the Concord Pollinator Health Committee. And so we've also, with the help of Delia Kay, we've chosen ideal location on the CC campus, which will be shown in like the next slide. And we've also planned for the implementation of the garden, which includes when we're going to do it, who's going to help us, all of that, which we'll also be going over in the following slides.
Location, we met with Delia Kay, Director and Will Holden Land Manager from Concord Natural Resources Department to find the perfect location for our garden. So as you can see in the picture on the right, the star marks the spot where we were thinking of. And we also got approval from Russ Hughes, the Facilities Manager. So we're all set in that area. Just some considerations that we want to take into mind was the flat surface. So there is a slight slope, but that shouldn't be a problem. And there's also a manhole cover, but we planned our garden, so it won't be near that, but it'll be a few feet away, and plant roots won't interfere with that. And then finally, there's also the young beech tree. And we gave it a 10-feet buffer space, which was what was recommended. And so again, that won't interfere. So just more garden specifics. So we measured and marked the exact outline of the garden. So as you can see, we're just standing around the edge. If we're going for like a butterfly shape, it's about 500 square feet of area, and there's no special soil needed, because the native plants that we're trying to plant can grow anywhere. And yeah, that is a pretty big space of 500 square feet area, but we're going to probably start with half of it to see how that goes.
So here are some features of the garden that we have planned. We are considering a paver path through the center, if people would want to walk through the garden. We also would mark the edges of the garden with stones, just for clarity for the grounds crew and for the community too. We're hoping to put clear signage, once again, supporting our goal of education. And the edges being marked by stones. We would probably buy some of the stones, but also we would find some stones ourselves to decrease costs and also to add to the natural look of the garden. And then one other detail is, there would need to be, one other detail would be that we would need to water it for the first year, and only for the first year, because, once again, these native plants have been adapted to live in these conditions. So they really wouldn't need much maintenance after the first year. And this rain barrel, we would elevate it on a platform in order to use gravity to get the water to the plants. And we would also paint it with flowers, butterflies, bees, pollinators, just so it matches with the rest of the garden. And that's temporary, once again.
So we wanted to talk a little bit about fundraising. So we estimate that it's going to be between $800 and $1,000. Like Maggie mentioned, we already have a rain barrel and some plants to get started. But we do need the rest of the plants and some paving stones. We could do two stages. I know Emerson talked about possibly doing the first half and then second half. So it's possible, if we don't have the funds immediately, that we could do some in the spring and finish in the fall. For possible fundraising tactics, we considered a GoFundMe, putting out information in the Concord Journal, the CCHS Voice, and the Carlisle Mosquito, and also fundraisers within CCHS. Like stickers are pretty popular, and a honey stick sale.
And then finally, the implementation. So that would be, students would provide the labor on a volunteer basis. So that would be Green Team. And we have approximately, well, approximately 40 members, but 15 who, about 15 who show up consistently. And then also, we would get the help of AP Environmental Sciences, because they are looking for an end-of-the-year project. So there would be tons of students to help out. And we would plant the plants this spring, and sort of check in with the garden over the summer, and weed it and everything else. And then sort of more on the process of how we would do it is we would remove the grass and we would compost that. So we're being as friendly to the environment as possible. We would plant the plants. And as I mentioned before, water them for the first year. And so all we need now is a final approval for the project. So that's it. I'll open the floor back up to comments or questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing this. A couple of years ago, there was a neat event at the high school that was about landscaping and all sorts of just environmentally friendly ways that you can modify your gardens and stuff. And I remember that there was a wonderful presentation about this, about the pollinators. And so I'm so excited to see that you guys have taken this on as a project. I think that's just phenomenal, and you've done some great work so far, and a lot of research, and clever ideas around this. So I don't think I have any questions for you. Just applause. Court?
Well, I will share in the applause. Thank you, Margaret, and Ruthie, and Emerson, and Catherine, and certainly Ms. Guiney as well. Maybe this one's from Ms. Guiney. How might this really apply to classroom teaching and learning? Is there a curriculum thread here that you're going to try to exploit, in the best sense of the word? Oh, and I didn't mention Alish, I'm sorry. Thank you too.
Yes, Alish is here as well. And we actually had other students who planned to come, but sports got in the way unfortunately today. So you would have seen even more students who are passionate about this. And in terms of the curriculum thread, I think there's a really strong curriculum thread for students to be working with outdoor plants. So in biology and AP Environmental Sciences, we could absolutely include this, because it's a really nice ecosystem study that we can be doing, looking at both the pollinator insects and animals, as well as the plants and the interactions. So just getting a sense of the interaction, collecting data, recording the data. There's a great app by Dr. Robert Jagir, who's like the expert on native pollinator work at UMass Dartmouth. And we could participate in that. It's called Bee Ecology, and we can report the bumblebees. And they're learning a lot more. That graph that Maggie showed is phenomenal. And he's like the expert on native pollinator plant and animal interaction. So we could participate in that. That would be really exciting, I think.
Wonderful, thank you. Was the location for convenience for people who will maintain this? Or for high visibility for everybody who uses the campus? Or is there more to it?
I'll let the students answer that.
Why'd you pick the location?
I guess I can start on that one. So one of our criteria was obviously not having a slope. So we identified the area around the drainage pond as a good area, because it is, currently doesn't seem to be being used. And it's also, it's not very sloped, which is good for the garden. And so we actually met with Delia Kay, who's the Concord Town Director of Natural Resources. And she also identified that location as a prime location for a garden. And we liked the location, other than the lack of a slope, because there is a sidewalk that is pretty close. So people would walk by and see the garden.
Good, wonderful, thank you.
Oh, sorry, go ahead Cynthia.
No, I was going to commend them for reaching out and working with Delia Kay, and Mark Hanson, and the, I think the professors at UMass Dartmouth. That's just wonderful collaboration, and I'm sure you really enjoyed it. And I'm glad you got to work with Delia on the location. That's just really wonderful. And I look forward to walking by it in your future.
Thank you. And I really want to thank Dr. Hunter too, because she actually pointed us to a number of these resources, and we found some of our own. There's a great network of naturalists out there who are really interested in conservation biology. And I just wanted to add, Dr. Windmiller actually helped point us to that location too. So he's very interested in the high school landscape. He's got background in animals and plants, and conservation biology is his thing. So thanks to, really Lori Hunter helped us out too, in figuring out who some of these point persons are. And it's been a great networking opportunity for our students. It's been amazing.
Great, thank you.
I want to join in the applauding your efforts. That's a wonderful idea. And this is something that I have participated in in the past in a different district, starting a school garden. And it was just fascinating going through the process. I have a couple of questions. Are you planning, I know you talked about the impact of pollinators on food production. Are you thinking, considering planting vegetables and fruits, or just flowers?
So it's a great question. And I know Bryce, who's head of our food services down the road, I'm sure would love to look at a sustainable vegetable garden as well. That's clearly a bigger hurdle in terms of making that happen. So this one seemed like a very reasonable step in school gardens. And this one is great, because it could be part of a native pollinator corridor. That's what's so essential to these plants and pollinators, is to actually have lots of spaces all throughout the community. And then in terms of a food and vegetable garden, that's a new step. But that would be really exciting. I think Bryce and other people would love to see that happen down the road.
Bryce has on hold a very ambitious greenhouse garden plan with CEF that COVID suspended, but I'm sure we will revisit it.
That's wonderful. In terms of funding, have you considered or looked at grants that might be useful for this kind of project?
I think the issue for us is just, it's the timeliness. We have to basically move on the plants immediately when they're available. So I actually myself purchased some through the Lincoln Conservation Land Trust, because they're really like state-of-the-art in terms of native pollinators. So I got, I gave us a head start, but it's really kind of that issue, like having the money ready to get the things when we want them. So we need a little bit more flexibility and agility, and that's kind of what we're working with. So we're hoping we can just reach out to the community and get some funds, and then be able to spend it when we need to.
Yes, thank you. And going back to my personal experience in this, I know that local garden centers and local farms are always eager to help donate plants. And, you know, they could use it as an underwriting, if they wish. So, and then you mentioned, I don't know if I heard you correctly, will you be using volunteer students to maintain the garden?
Yes, so I can answer that one, yeah. So yes, it would be members of Green Team and AP Environmental Sciences would volunteer their time and help plant the plants and check in with the garden maintainers.
Thank you. So will this count towards the 40-hour, 40 credit hours for volunteering for the high school?
I'm sure we can arrange that, yes, absolutely. And the great news is, Green Team is first-year students all the way through juniors. We don't seem to have too many seniors. And, well, they're leaving in a few weeks. So we're just really happy we have a great breadth of students, and the AP Environmental Science students are seniors. So we're going to catch them.
My last question. I know we compost with black earth, right Lori, Dr. Hunter? So I know they, I don't know if we get compost from them, but in return for composting with them, they provide compost. So I wonder if that's something that the club can also explore.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sure we can explore that, and that's a great thought. Thank you.
Yes.
In fact, it's this group that got the composting back on track recently, after COVID came in. So we know they're connected to that, for sure.
That's wonderful. Finally, I want to, I'm congratulating everybody. Particularly, I want to say hello to Emerson, who was my colleague on the Challenge Success Committee at the middle school. And I'm really happy to see you continuing your involvement at the high school.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just add my applause quickly, very quickly, both for all of your initiative and for the comprehensive planning. I mean, it seems like you really have all the details thought through well here. And it looks fabulous. I applaud you, well done.
I just have a quick question, guys. Not for this year, because I know everything is one step at a time when you're taking on these kind of projects. But I know that there are similar, like, student, and at the younger level, student and parent together-led groups, who are interested in this same kind of environmental sustainability. I know when my kids were at Thoreau School, there was even interest back then in doing a vegetable garden. They have a little garden that I think might now be in some level of disrepair. It was sort of when I was leaving. And I'm wondering if maybe like, I don't know, you guys could marinate on the thought of trying to figure out how to work together across all of the different schools as your journey sort of evolves. Because I think that would be really cool. Like, you're big kids mentoring little kids, and I don't know. It just seems really neat, a cool idea to me.
I love that idea. I'm going to have Alish comment on that, because I think the students are really interested in that. So Alish, do you want to comment a little bit about the idea of working with the middle school or the elementary schools? Because you've done that this year.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Me, Catherine, and Ruthie actually did a presentation to the middle school about some of the things we've been doing at the high school for sustainability. So I think that would be another cool thing that we could add in the future.
Be awesome. You guys are awesome. This is so great. Well done.
Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on, I know a lot of people who are involved in the Alcott Garden, and that they're really close, and a lot of the parents involved in that. And they've expressed a lot of interest in having the high school be involved in the garden there, or even some of the initiatives they took to teach some of, I think it was second and third graders, about the garden and different types of planting. So I know the parents involved in that gardening system are very interested in working with the high school. So I think that was a very good point, and that we could definitely expand on that.
Well, you came not only to teach us, to inform us, but also to seek the school committee's endorsement. And I think you have abundant evidence that you've got that endorsement. So we want to thank all of you, and Ms. Guiney certainly, and the support that Dr. Hunter provided along the way. And we know you've got many other supporters, including folks in town government and natural resources. And you've recruited people like Dr. Windmiller. So thank you for your really careful, thorough efforts to put this together. This is going to be something that you make possible at the high school. It's going to be there for many, many people to enjoy in the future and benefit from in so many ways. To say nothing of the benefits to our ecosystem. We shouldn't think this is a small garden. This is a small garden that's a big idea, that has so much potential. So thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing us to come present. Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing about the fundraising.
Absolutely. Elements, yeah. Great, thank you so much. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, all. Thank you. Thanks for coming, and good luck with it.
That's so exciting. Wonderful. So where are we? Oh, Chairs and Liaisons reports. Do we have any updates? I know Policy is meeting on Thursday?
Yep. Also, I don't know if all of you guys got this, but as liaison, the the CPAC has uh, a formal date for their appreciation awards, which I think is May 6th. Um, their, their nominees are out or I don't know if they're recipients or nominees, I forget. But um, they finally have their, their date.
Fantastic.
Um, on behalf of uh, both chairs, I think I speak for Sarah as well here. Um, I have requested that uh, in two weeks' time when we meet again, we uh, put aside a few minutes to discuss what I will refer to tonight as uh, school committee coffees. Um, we have had from a, a few different sources, including school committee members, the idea put forward that we uh, do something by way of uh, making uh, community connections between the community at large and the school committee uh, more possible through perhaps an informal means, this being rather formal, what we can do here in public comments. Um, so far, the conversation has only gone so far as to say perhaps a, a monthly uh, convening of anybody who would like to connect up with uh, a, a couple of members of the school committee might uh, serve, serve our interests and the community's interests nicely. Um, so we, I would request that we put that on the agenda for two weeks' time and uh, uh, think about it in advance so we can really keep that conversation brief and see what we might put together for the future. Sarah, anything to add to that?
I don't think so. Um, I, I, I'm looking, you know, it'd be good to figure out the details, figure out how, how, how this all works out. But I think um, we definitely welcome more, uh, more dialogue, more interaction.
And this would not be considered uh, anything formal. Uh, and uh, nothing would happen that would officially represent the school committee. Instead, it would be listen and learn.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Sarah.
Okay. I haven't heard anything else, no?
So I just wanted, we referenced it earlier, but the finance committee did meet last Thursday and sent a letter to the middle school building committee. The um, it was another agenda, but select board did have a discussion um, about the middle school as well. So um, I'm sure that, that will come up at the middle school building committee on Thursday at 7:30 AM.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And um, all right, so we can go to the meeting, uh, to the minutes. Um, a motion to accept the open session meetings from three, from March 9th and March 16th. And executive session from uh, March 2nd and March 9th.
So moved for both committees.
And I will, I will second.
Session?
Thank you, Erin.
Erin, thank you for keeping us, keeping us on task. Okay, uh, roll call vote please.
Anderson, I.
And who's I for both?
That I for both.
Is that I for both?
Mostafi, I for region.
Rini, I for both.
And Wilson for region. Great, thank you. Um, correspondence, I have nothing for correspondence on the regional side. Court?
Uh, yes, the Concord School Committee was, since we met last, it was copied on fourteen pieces of correspondence that had gone to the uh, middle school building committee. And we received one uh, advocating uh, more mask wearing off school grounds by children coming and going from school.
Okay. Oh, superintendent's report, Dr. Hunter.
Hmm, thank you. I'm gonna pick highlights of this, but we can talk on any parts that you'd like, even if I don't mention them. Um, in terms of thinking forward, we actually started this morning as a leadership team, a protocol to capture what uh, we want, what we think was positive out of uh, the COVID experience to date. That'll be then replicated. It was a train the trainer kind of model, um, so that the uh, building and central office leaders can then work with their department chairs and grade levels and it'll get replicated. Um, in terms of data collection from students, we're going to be administering challenge success surveys, um, which are going to capture a wide range of information across wellness and academic perspectives. Um, it'll also be a nice comparison to look at our previous challenge success survey uh, data collection back in 2016 and 17. Um, these are similar to the youth risk behavior surveys we usually do. They actually, we administered the youth risk behavior survey literally a month, no, two weeks before we closed last March. So unfortunately, we're feeling like we need to update those and I think this will be a great tool. And obviously, we always just value that work challenge success puts into surveys. Um, that'll be part of a bigger picture plan. We also want to capture uh, feedback from parents. So more to come on all of that. Um, just updates from the state in terms of academics. We did hear from the status to the tiered focus monitoring in special ed and ELL and had no findings in special ed and civil rights. One minor finding, which is a simple corrective piece um, with ELL. So we're really pleased with that, especially COVID lens was put on all of it. So um, kind of an interesting place to be where you're creating things on the fly and then being uh, assessed on them all at the same time. Uh, two remaining professional days in the month of May, the 3rd and the 28th are coming up. Uh, we obviously, I'm gonna skip to the real news of the day is the full return of all the kids uh, in having the middle and high school students return. We're, we're through two days. Um, overall, an incredibly huge success and that's to the credit of absolutely everyone. Um, I think the, the pinch points we predicted didn't all come true at this point, which is great. Uh, traffic before, at beginning and end of day and lunch. Um, our true test will be on rainy days. Um, so we're actually grateful not to have started with, with the weather being an issue. Um, but a lot of great collaboration. I couldn't even begin to name everyone. So really successful so far. Um, so thank you to everyone involved there. Um, just in terms of COVID status, I think it's worth mentioning a few points. I was on a call with the commissioner earlier. He is mandating full return of high schools, May 17th at the latest. So we're grateful we're already in. Um, he also mentioned, you probably saw the governor is lift, you know, starting to ease some restrictions outdoors. We are being very clear and he reiterated this at, at the state level that we are not easing restrictions in terms of mask wearing and such at school at all, outside or not. Um, we're gonna leave the year strongly conservative in those measures. Um, and be sure we do as much as possible to stay in. I will, that's gonna sound a little counter to my next statement, which is Desi has looked at uh, minimizing quarantines to three feet instead of six feet. Um, and we are not gonna follow that right off. Uh, I had a lot of, that was put out initially over the break. I spent time with both Susan Rask, Health Director, and Tricia McKee and our Public Health Nurse. We have concerns that it would just be a three foot parameter within the school, not in any other place. Um, I understand their intent is to minimize the impact of quarantines. We've felt that extensively. Uh, we would very much like to work through the full return and better understand our vulnerabilities here before we start going to a less, a lesser uh, distance in terms of close contact identification. So I just wanted to be sure I was clear about that with all of you. That hasn't had a lot of attention out in the media, but it, it is out there that Desi is allowing that as a choice. Um, we're gonna stay more conservative, at least initially here. I, you know, case counts in the last four days where, we've had eight since Sunday. So, and two today with kids and a staff member in school resulting in quarantines that are happening as I speak. So we just want to go a little slow, um, let get, certainly get through this week after the vacation and see if that all settles down, which typically it does, um, and just go from there. So just voicing that that's the direction we're going. And if you want to offer feedback or support on that, we'd be happy to hear it.
I, let me interrupt then right now, say, I, I can't speak for my colleagues. Uh, they'll speak for themselves, but uh, I want to support your conservative approach to this. Um, I think we have seen an uptick in the last 24 hours. Uh, I don't think we're out of the woods yet. And uh, I think it's gonna protect uh, the greatest number uh, for the greatest number of days. Um, if we keep doing what we're doing, uh, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're here, I agree with Court.
And I'll remind you, we, we have tightened up the live streaming access at the middle and high school, but not for quarantines. If you're quarantined, you are absolutely able to access your classes throughout that time period. Um, so thank you. I think, you know, we can keep revisiting it for sure if, if things continue, continue to moderate. But um, I, I think an exciting number and I want to be sure we support the families that chose to stay remote. But the 95% return is among the highest I've heard. I do think there's a lot of confidence in the full return and a lot of belief that's where kids want to be. And I think we're hearing that from them, a little mixed on occasion with the wow, this, these are a lot of people. I haven't been around this many people in a long time. Uh, but 95% return is, is pretty, pretty exceptional right now. And you know, certainly indicative hopefully of the faith and trust. While we work really hard to make sure those kids at our home are connected, that is absolutely a priority. Um, probably the other exciting news this week was seeing all the staff back. There are staff who'd been remote this whole time and it just was such a full compliment at the middle and high schools to have kids with live teachers everywhere you looked yesterday. It was, it definitely felt like a big step forward. Um, in terms of tests, uh, student testing, and I'll be curious to see the numbers this week. We've, we've had some up, increase before the break to get over 1700 K through 12. So I'm hoping this week it continues to grow. Aaron's here to talk high school sports in a few minutes. We are mandating it for the athletes at middle and high school in an effort to minimize. We, we've been quarantining whole, whole teams. We'd like to switch that and go to a testing mode and a close contact process and try to keep more kids in school. So we'll keep you posted on that. Um, we are at the Concord Fin, shifting gears completely to money. Uh, we're going to the Finance Committee in Concord's public hearing next week on the 6th. So you'll want to note that Jared's building this, revisiting the slides that we've had already that we've used before um, to put the budgets in, in the, in front of the community and take any questions they have. We are still, Jared, this is correct, right? Still awaiting final numbers from the last stimulus package?
Correct, no, nothing yet.
Surprisingly slow. Um, as soon as we know, we will hear. I'm gonna save the uh, DEI comments till we get to that agenda item. And you've already spoken on the middle school. Um, one piece that wasn't part of that other conversation was just the design team is reaching out and uh, Justin and I will be scheduling each department to meet again with the uh, design team. That'll sort of be the first round of schematic design starting off, hopefully before they leave for the summer, so that we have that feedback from them. So it's very busy, uh, but a lot of good, good happening. It feels good to be forward thinking and forward moving.
Thank you. I think, I think your, your, your flexibility, your adaptability is um, is to be commended in terms of uh, you know, keeping the rules evolving and um, and being conscientious and, and cautious, but still uh, really working towards uh, maximum student, student in person time uh, in the safest way possible.
Yeah, and that's such a collaborative effort and you know, that's the messaging of the community is this, actually the outside piece might impact us more in school and just staying on the same page. Doesn't mean we're not gonna get cases. It could happen anytime and well. Um, but we're, we're working as a really big team in a different way now, so great, thank you.
Are there any questions? Eva?
Hi, um, I wanted to commend again, uh, Dr. Hunter for this like, again, the flexibility to uh, to adjust. Um, uh, while everything is fluid, uh, really on the go. Um, uh, I, I had a quick question about how, if we heard any feedback coming from the classrooms, from students or teachers or families about um, how is the spacing working out for our students now that we have everybody in, uh, in the building?
Sure. We've had um, a nice flow of positives from families and thank yous. I will say, and Mr. Mustulov said it to me before I got to the high school yesterday. He said, "It's gonna take you back a little bit when you get to a class of 25 all in that room together." And he's correct, and I think we heard a little bit of that from the kids. Not to the point of panic, but again, they're adjusting to being in that kind of environment again. They weren't distanced, you know, not, not all squeezed together the way we used to do, but it, it's so different than what we're used to now. Um, it, it does take a little and I, I know last night, um, we met with some teachers, a few of you were there and heard some kids are just rolling with it and excited to be back. Others are having a little anxiety of how do I stay safe and how do we navigate that? And we're really working to support all of those feelings. So you know, just like all these other changes, it's a, it's a change, right? Um, and we've gotta, gotta approach it that way. I will say, I saw instruction happening yesterday across all the middle and high school rooms. Um, so I think we've had those moments of introduction and I did hear a lot of teachers talk about icebreakers. Like these cohorts of kids haven't been together since ever, uh, in many cases. So some icebreakers going on and a little bit of that first week of school getting to know you and then making their way back to the content from before the break. So I did hear a couple of teachers had no remote kids yesterday and they were actually able to turn the Zoom off and close the computers and just be together and talk the way things used to be. And we heard from several teachers what a really nice thing that was and kids do, you know, just to talk and not need a screen as part of the interface. So, so, but we're gonna, yeah, it, it's a day at a time, but a really great start, so thank you.
Okay, there are questions or comments?
I just, you know, it's, it, being in a school, we're pretty much in the same schedule. We're, well, actually, it's gonna be tomorrow, so I really don't know. But we have all the kids at the elementaries back and just hearing them all run around outside in the big group is just, and they have the longer day, you know, so they, is, they can have their recess and they can really spend time with their friends and it just, it's, it's, it's so great. And it's a great time of the year to do it. I'm wondering how the uh, traffic pickups, drop offs are going?
It's going, it's going okay. Um, it's a lot of people, but I think, think between the plans we made and the, you know, collaborative patient responsive families, um, it's going okay. So that's actually, and Concord Police, I can't say enough, as always, they've jumped in to help and navigate and strategize and um, so far, so good.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I actually thought that might be one of our biggest issues and uh, it hasn't been, at least yet.
That's good, hey, yeah, take it one day at a time.
Yeah, we did get a lot, you know, I think the difference of getting more kids on the buses. Um, everyone who wanted to get on is on, so they really are at a capacity for 25 kids at a piece. I think that probably mattered more than I factored in, so.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you and all the, the staff and the families and the students for, for a successful return. Uh, and I see the excitement. I don't think I, I never thought I would say this, but I, I really, um, I, I have missed the recess at um, Willard. I actually missed that, so it was great to hear them again. And uh, so yeah, it's, it's, it's wonderful. The fun, the, the strange thing is that we have gotten used to uh, to the social distancing and the remoteness that now as a class of 20 feels crowded. A lot of kids, uh, but the kids are, are very excited to be together again. And uh, and yeah, it's, it was, it was interesting for the um, the sixth graders and the ninth graders. Uh, new kids for the first time uh, this year, it was really uh, interesting. Yeah, but thank you and congratulations for everybody.
Yeah, I know, I, and I talked more about it with the high school than I did the middle school, but the, just those transition years where kids, you know, some of the remote kids hadn't been to the schools at all and we brought so many back, there was a lot of concerted effort to acclimate them. We brought, most of them were able to get in before the break. And um, just realizing that those groups of kids had not experienced the, the transition's already hard and hear all these other variables, so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, reports for discussion, Erin? Thank you. Thank you. Reports for discussion. Aaron Jankus, welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Every time I'm here, I'm following up a student presentation that blows me out of the water. Tough act to follow.
We feel the same way.
I've just got a few slides tonight that I think you had earlier. I think I can, I don't know if I can, if Aaron can share those or if I can, maybe I'm a co-host.
You've got them. Go ahead.
Okay. Just in a briefly go over our spring program, talk about a few of the safety protocols and, and answer any questions that I can. We have just over, actually, since I put this together, more than 425 students participating this spring. We're up around 435. We've got baseball and softball, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls tennis, outdoor track and field for boys and girls. And then this year, we started a unified track and field program, which was on our agenda for last year and was curtailed when school closed. So, they had their first practice yesterday. Unified track and field is a partnership with the Special Olympics program. And we've got students in both our pathways and, and bridge programs that are competing as athletes and, and some other students that are serving as partners, they're called. So, we've got about 15 students in the unified track and field program. And they had a blast yesterday. A lot of enthusiasm around that. And we're really excited to be able to get that off the ground. So, that will be a highlight for us this spring. Typically with the unified program, there are four meets, two at home and two that are away. Since we're a new program, they're trying to figure out how we're going to fit in. But we're looking forward to, to getting that off the ground this year. Fortunately, all of our spring sports are outdoors. So, that really increases our safety and our comfort level. And then in addition, the majority of spring sports are low to moderate risk as designated by the EEA. Masks are required in all of the sports. And as Dr. Hunter expressed, we have a conservative approach in athletics as well for mask wearing. And one of the things that we're implementing this spring that's different from previous seasons is pool testing by team. We're going to start that on Monday of next week. We've got to take some time to finish tryouts and make sure that we know which students are assigned to which teams. And then I'll be working with the school nurses here at the high school to coordinate team testing pools. And so, we're, we're working out some of the fine details, you know, some questions have come up that we didn't think about. Originally, we've got, we've got about five or six middle school kids who are playing in our softball program. So, we've got to figure out a way to include them in the pool. And, and then we've got some students who are fully remote. And, you know, since we'll do the testing during the lunch blocks here at school, I don't want to ask kids to come in just to test. So, the school nurses and I are working out a plan to try to do that after school before practices. So, it's not an inconvenience for families. The feedback overall around that has been pretty positive when we introduced it to families, even had a couple of conversations with kids about it, you know, and, and some questions certainly. But I think that the spring athletes in particular are really eager to have an opportunity to compete, having lost out on their season last year. So, they're really willing to, to do whatever it takes in order to complete their season. And many of them have either themselves or have had friends or teammates experience at least one quarantine period. And if there's anything that can, that they can do that can contribute to a shorter or elimination of a quarantine in the event of a positive case, they're, they're all in. So, we've decided to keep the locker rooms closed. And we're going to, we're going to see how that works out for the first week or two. It's a little trickier than it has been up until this point in the year because we have all the students on campus. So, we don't have the benefit of having half of our athletes at home and, and arriving at school changed and ready to go. But practices start a good 40 minutes after school, 3:30. So, there's lots of time for kids to change, either later in the day during a lunch block, or if they have the last block of the day off, as many of our upperclassmen try to finagle. And it's worked out okay for the first two days. So, I think once we get into game schedules and have, you know, later start times for teams that are at home and kids heading out to away games, I think we'll get in a groove and that'll work out okay. Let's see. Sorry about that. And we'll continue to play in pods within the dual county league with a few exceptions. We are, are in the sort of a fortunate space where we have opportunities for lots of kids. In girls lacrosse, for example, we'll, we'll have three teams. Unfortunately, we're the only team in the dual county league, only school, rather, with three girls lacrosse teams. So, in, in those cases, I'm forced to sort of look outside of the league and find us opponents to play. But again, I think that with the moderate to low risk for most of our outdoor sports, girls lacrosse, lacrosse included, we feel a little bit more comfortable with playing communities that are a little bit further from, from home. This year, the MIAA did vote to hold a state tournament at the close of the regular season. They are a little bit different. One of the most significant modifications is that it's an open tournament, which means that each school and team, varsity team, will have the opportunity to decide if they want to compete. So, it's an opt-in tournament. The season, regular season will end around June 15. But there is the possibility that if a team advances deep into the postseason, they could be competing right up until the end of June in a state tournament. So, you know, we'll, we'll sort of tackle that as it comes. I think, you know, we're expecting that if a team advances, it's possible that there'll be conflicts for a few students or families based on plans that they made already, kids who have summer programs they're attending or summer travel plans and so forth. So, we'll try to handle those on a case-by-case basis and do what's best for the students and work with families. And as always, we, you know, we've got senior events and graduation and town meeting this spring. So, we're just trying to work together and collaborate and make sure that we can fit everything in. It'll be a hectic few weeks there in June, but we're, we're glad to have it. So. And that's it. I told you I'd be pretty quick tonight. So, can I answer any questions, Ray?
Aaron, I want to thank you, of course, for your work. How late in the, into June? I thought I saw some July something, third date?
Yes. The July 3rd date has really been an eye-opener for people. Originally, that July 3rd date came because when they elected to have a fourth athletic season, the fall two season that just finished, they basically took the school year and tried to divide it into quarters equitably so that each season would have a comparable length of time. As we got further into the school year, there was a lot of discussion about July 3rd being too late. And so, some of the individual committees have voted and made recommendations to the MIAA that tournaments end no later than June 26th, for, for example. I don't have any expectations that will go as far as July 3rd. I think everything will be over while we're still in June. But, you know, there's a, there's, there could be the possibility that one or two teams in the state have to play a game on July 1st, for example, you know, if weather forces us to move late. But I think everybody is doing their best to finish up while we're still in June.
Because I, I know you schedule our field. So, I'm sure camps are eager to get onto.
Yes. We've been working through all that.
And I don't know, you know, you don't schedule the Doug White Field, but I'm sure you, you collaborate with the town and talk about that schedule as well, or not really, or?
Or for the summer, you mean, or during the?
Yeah, yeah.
During the summer, yeah. To be honest with you, the, the recreation program runs, I think, adult lacrosse up there. And then our field hockey program typically uses it for a junior clinic for the middle school kids. But that's late August. But for the most part, everything that gets, that happens here in the summer is either down in the lower grass.
Right. Yep.
Or, or Memorial. But I've always worked closely with the recreation department. So, we're, we're in contact when needed.
I'm sure they're all, when does the season start? Today?
We started today. Yeah, we started yesterday. So, you know, we were, today was a beautiful afternoon. I was, you know, out before I came in for the meeting. So, we were, we're lucky that we've gotten the last two days in. Everything's going well so far. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Campus looks great, too. Our, our grounds guys, the facilities crew, they've really done a nice job. We had the turf field groomed today and the grass looks like it's in, you know, prime sort of late spring condition. So, we're really grateful for their support.
Aaron, thank you very much. Would you be kind enough to remind us, remind me about the fee schedule for this year?
Yep. Most sports are 300 per season. There's a $900 family cap. The, a couple of programs we made, we have a 50% reduction. So, that would be the unified track program. The fall two track program, no, you know, they didn't have any meets. It was intramural. It was four days a week. So, we reduced that to 150. And then one of the things I forgot to mention is that we have a, our wrestling team is just doing level one participation, which is all outdoor strength and conditioning only. There's no actual wrestling, no person-to-person contact. But we want to give those students an opportunity for a team experience. So, they're going to do a four-day-a-week strength and conditioning program outdoors. And so, that's going to be $150 as well.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Aaron, the whole thing looks awesome. It inspires confidence. Thank you. It's, I, I know how excited the athletes are. I just had one question on testing. I love that we're doing the testing for everybody in pools. Given that there are now kids getting vaccinated, are kids who are vaccinated still getting tested? Yes. Great. So, it's just everybody?
Yeah. The recommendation is still for those students to be tested.
Makes sense. Yeah.
And for kids who are already in the pool program, who are participating in a sport, there's nothing they need to do. It's just administrative for you guys on the backend?
Right. What we're, what we're, what we're doing, once the rosters are established, you know, for example, let's take the ninth grade baseball team. If we know there are 20 students on that team and say five of those are already involved in the pool testing now, we'll pull those five and put them in a separate pool with the ninth grade baseball team. So, there'll be two pools of 10 students tested. So, that's why we just need a little, little, a couple of days to generate the rosters and schedule everything.
Awesome. Great. I think I just commented the middle school is getting up and going, too, very paralleled with a couple of differences, one being lacrosse. And two, they've actually brought basketball outside for the spring. We never, we never, it started not being intentional, and then it became very intentional to not play basketball inside at the middle school in this, in the surge over the winter. So, we're excited that that program's coming back and have a little different flavor in a less risky environment. And so, a lot of middle school kids engaging, too, which is great.
Helps you jump shot to face, face the wind. Well, if, if at any time during this season, you know, anything comes up, feel free to reach out. And I just would say, you know, send again my appreciation to the committee and to Dr. Hunter and, and Mr. Mistrillo. You know, we're very fortunate. I think our kids have benefited greatly from being able to participate all year. And I know that when I talk to my colleagues in other districts, I'm just, you know, really appreciative of the support that we have here. So, thanks very much.
Well, Aaron, thanks to you, too. The COVID layer is a whole nother responsibility for you. So, we're appreciative of all your work.
Well, my pleasure. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Garrett.
So, old business. Dr. Hunter again.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is meant to be a verbal update primarily on where we are with the follow-up to the last conversation we had on the DEI director, as you know, and has been announced. We've appointed Andrew Nemeche as our Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Andrew's, I'll give you a little background on the rationale behind that. I think it's worth saying out loud beside what maybe you already know of Andrew. He comes with a master's degree in cultural work. And that has clearly served us well in the opportunities he's had so far in the district and the consult and work that he's provided to us. And talking with him about his visions of this work, it was very clear that he's got another level that he wants to take us to. And I'll talk in a minute about what we're doing for Metco because to do that, he has to leave Metco to someone else to run on the day-to-day basis and really just be at a 50,000-foot level as the program, you know, may need to check in here and there. But really, his vision of inclusion for all and how we can accomplish that, and the ways in which it can happen, and the ways to engage the community. And I think we're going to invite Andrew to an upcoming meeting so he can talk with you directly on all of that. Since, you know, we really saw, we didn't do that piece of the process. And part of my rationale for, it's very, it's unheard of for me to make an appointment without more of a dialogue and interactive process with the community and such. You know, I spent some time this past year, you know, I'm sitting on the Superintendent's Association Equity, Diversity and Inclusion piece. And then having been on some webinars with the National Association, what I really heard loud and clear in all of these forums with my colleagues was the, the challenges in finding people with certain skills and that the connections and relationships were so critical to be able to do this kind of work that requires a safe environment. And so, Andrew brings the skills. Andrew brings the relationships that I think are going to help us to hit the ground running. And I, I just wanted to be sure we captured that opportunity. So, I would love to bring Andrew. I think we're going to slate him to come to our next meeting and have some dialogue with all of you. Again, he's, he's got a vision for us, and I want him to get a chance to start to share it, but also know he's going to build that collaboratively and, you know, really take us to the next piece. The part that has to happen in order for him to be available to do that, which I'm sure is part of your, you know, worry and concern and, and hope, is that we have the Metco program run as adeptly as we have been having it run under Andrew, but have that happen without Andrew. So, we have posted for a Metco director. And so, those resumes started to come in over the break. We utilized all the connections that we've built with the national registrants for candidates of color. So, it's out on all of the normal platforms, plus those, those connections. And that's already served us well in a couple of other searches for teachers. So, we expect that will be the same. That will be a thorough process. And we're actually meeting with Metco families tomorrow night to talk through where we are, how they can engage, what's coming next. And then the Metco director will have more supports underneath that position at the school level. So, there's an availability for even more support to kids and families at each building level. We are definitely looking to flesh out liaisons, academic liaisons at each school, and then deciding what other supports we need so that the scaffolding allows for really thorough, in-depth supports to, to all kids that have been so well-served and allows Andrew to take off with this piece and, and role we want him to have. So, all of those pieces are, are moving. And we'll, we'll get Andrew here to speak with you and then keep you updated on the hiring processes. I'm actually meeting with a liaison candidate tomorrow. And then the director piece as it, as it goes forward. So, it's, it's an exciting, exciting place to be. We can start to feel the difference already just in having the position and seeing how it's, you know, going to connect to the work we're doing. So, you know, I, I was on a quick meeting with the core group last night. And, you know, it is going to be a little bit fluid, right? There, we, we might have a path we set out on, and we're going to want to adjust it as we go, but, and build it collaboratively and take all the input we've already heard, which we really valued. But, and build it collaboratively and take all the input we've already heard, which we really valued at the session you all attended. And the upcoming one, we're going to reschedule. You know, the key to this piece is the feedback loop. And this work, I think unlike any other, it's just so critical. I, I know intent and impact can be so different. And we have to be sure whatever our intentions are, that the impact is what we're, we're looking for. So it'll be an ongoing iterative process for sure. Some more to come.
All right. Lori, I hope you can pass on our, not only congratulations, but for me at least, even more importantly, our thanks to Andrew also. I mean, I, I feel very fortunate that he wanted to take on this, this role and position and that we have him. Like you said, it's not easy to find people for something like this. And I feel like he's an amazing resource. And so I hope you can pass on our thanks to him for having the vision and the drive and desire to do this because we're lucky to have him.
I will. And then you can tell him yourself.
I guess we will.
Definitely look forward to, to having him with us to, to hear about this new, this new undertaking.
I don't know if he's sleeping. Like that's the sense I get from him of like how, you know, he's already, already processing.
I'm, I'm very pleased that he's going to take this on. And I look forward to having more conversations with him about goals and metrics that he wants to put in place. And most importantly, right now, the kind of resources he thinks he needs to make meaningful change. I'll share with the committee what I've shared with the superintendent more directly. And that is that I am very hopeful that Mr. Nemeche's focus will include Metco, but won't be devoted too much to Metco. So we have, I see it as a structural problem. He's got a direct line to Metco responsibility, but he has another direct line to a K-12 strategic change initiative. And those are, those are, those are different. They're connected, but they are different. And on the one hand, the new Metco director is going to need a lot of support, deserves a lot of support if it's a new, new person coming into that role. But if it's exclusively Andrew, then it can only distract from other objectives. So I, I really want Dr. Hunter, you to understand my concern about that. And how, how, how Mr. Nemeche puts a focus or boundaries around certain aspects of, of his job, I think is going to be critical. Because my fear is that if we change names, but don't change other aspects of this, we're, we're going to continue to struggle the way we have struggled for so long. This, we, we've created a big opportunity here. We don't get to do this kind of thing very often. So I think we really have to emphasize how important it is. And to your point, the, the iterative process or the feedback loops or the communication mechanisms whereby we manage and monitor what this can mean for us is, is going to be critical. Which leads me to say again that I, I remain convinced that a school committee, subcommittee that looks at this at a school committee level can benefit us as well. So that's something that I'm going to bring back in the future, perhaps when the new committee is seated or perhaps we'll set it up for the new committee. Finally, we almost pulled together a second community session for purposes of a community wide dialogue. You've got one specifically for our Boston parents tomorrow. And I don't want to let that one drop off the radar. And I know you don't either, Dr. Hunter.
Correct. So we're working on that date, get through, find that right time where we avoid conflicts and be as accessible to everyone. So I would say by the third week or so of May, we'll be ready to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about any of the, the reorganization and, and appointment?
So I just remember from our last meeting, the only real work done with our consultants is the survey with the seniors. Is that kind of a correct?
For this spring. Yes, that's correct.
So is it possible for us to get a copy of the survey? I assume it's getting done pretty soon.
Yeah, sure. No, absolutely.
And then, you know, I, I agree with Heather and Court. I look forward to having, you know, I'm really excited to have a dialogue with Mr. Nemeche about how he moved forward and perhaps a little more detail on what he, what his expectations are. And I know it, I agree, it needs to be somewhat fluid. But on the other hand, working with consultants needs to have structure and clear measurement and goals. And otherwise, you know, you won't be successful. So, so yeah, if we get a copy of the survey and sort of get a, you know, an outlook from Andrew about what he sees for the next, you know, short term.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I think you'll hear outlook. I think you'll hear structure. I think you'll hear vision. I think, you know, you'll hear all the base, you know, the foundations that we need to then get started and the pillars under which each, each category of work is going to fall. So. Good.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add that this is a very important work. And I'm really excited that Andrew has decided to step into this role as a big part of success in, in programs that are so sensitive is that trust, those bridges that he has already built with the students, with the faculty, understanding where, where is the culture of Concord and our students and what are the needs? So I'm really looking forward to seeing him come in and hit the, hit the ground running. So looking forward to this. And it's really a process that it, it can be ordered from top down. It has, it's a grassroots, it grows through grassroots connections, human connections and associations and those conversations. And so I'm really excited that we have someone with his, with his background and his, and, and already those human connections in place.
Okay. Just wanted to say that I have a high regard for, for Andrew and I admire, I appreciate the work that he has been doing for us since he joined. I have also high regard for Dr. Hunter and your judgment in, in, in your appointment. And I, I want to express that, want to go back to the forum, to the parent forum and some of the feedback that we heard in that forum. And I, I wonder what, how we are going to fold it into this, this work. I, I, I think it would have done justice to Andrew had we done a nationwide search and decided that Andrew was the candidate for us. I think he compared to other candidates, I think it would have done justice to him. But I do understand, Dr. Hunter, you're hearing from other superintendents that the pool is not that, that wide. I, I would have liked us to have gone through that process and given it a few months as the, the, the community forum had recommended. And also what I am curious about the plans of offering Andrew's support. You know, again, I, I echo some of the statements from that parent forum, that this is not a job for one person. It's probably a department. So, and again, going back to trusting your judgment and what kind of support that he'll be needing. If you could just tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think we all, we all have that same question going forward. I feel, I honestly feel like we need to let Andrew become in the posi, to, to get into the position, bring us his, you know, he needs an entry plan, just like every position typically would in leadership, where he's really taking in and obviously his, he has the benefit of some background experience, but I feel strongly he needs to do it with this new lens on, that he's not, you know, doing an entry plan as Metco director. He's doing an entry plan as Director of DEI. And I think that will start to be the survey work along with the, you know, formal surveys we're doing with the consultants. It'll start to inform us. I, 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 I think we, we may get to a place where there needs to be other people delegate, you know, designated as, you know, we heard the suggestions of someone targeting elementary, someone targeting secondary. I think we may get to that place. I don't want to rush to that until we've done the work and let him, you know, really build that entry piece to understand how the, the pillars of the work, and once you hear the categories and targeted areas that we're going to be, be looking to. How, how does that fit? Cause what the other part of the, the other part of what we know is this has to also be work that's done collaboratively across all of the leadership positions, working directly with teachers and such. And so to what range can the position reach that initially? And then where do we need other hands? Do we need other hands? So I, I think that's part of the work this, this early days is to really understand the supports that he's going to need. I don't want to act like I have, I don't know that answer yet. I think it's likely he may need more support. That's probably very accurate. But I think we want to let him get started and really understand what best supports it would be. I'd hate to rush to put things in without really being clear on what the purpose is going to be. So more to come on that. I, I did, I heard it loud and clear too, and certainly share the question of, of what does the support work look like?
Can I ask a really maybe difficult question? And I think maybe it, it does reflect some of the concerns from the parents. So i- in a scenario where Andrew and you, Dr. Hunter disagree on a, on a, on a pathway or a vision, what, what happens? How do you foresee you handling that with him if you, if you don't see eye to eye on one particular point or one particular direction?
So I'm smiling because that's already happened. On, it happens with all, all of us among the leadership team. I'm going to say we, we, this is what happens, right? We spend the time together to talk through my perspective and their perspective and whatever expertise they bring. In Andrew's case, it will be the equity work. The first example I'll give you is the letter that so carefully went out last week in response to the verdict of the Chauvin trial. That was a letter we worked on prior to and ahead of time. And there was a lot of dialogue about that. And there was absolutely things that were out of my comfort zone. And Andrew said it has to be there, Lori. And it was there. So it's a, it's a process to, he is the expert in this, just like I defer to Ruth on special ed and et cetera, down the line that, you know, I, I must and am respectful of that. So I think it will, we will be okay. I, I, I will say, I think there's courage to come in this work and I'm going to be excited to have, you know, I don't want letters like that going out with just my name on that. That was actually very uncomfortable last week because it was such a collaborative work. And once he's in the position, we're going to be able to name it as such. So I think, I think there's a lot of growth to be had there. So I appreciate the hard question. There will be times it's out of my own comfort zone and probably comfort zones of others. And that's the point, right? So we need that.
Thank you.
So we'll see, we'll see Andrew soon. And, and we will look forward to figuring out when, when the community, the meet and greet. Great. Thank you. Court, anything to?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. And so now we are on to new business, which will be Heather, the, with the CCHS Capital Projects. I believe we're going to put off.
Okay. That's right. Do we, wait, am I looking at the most recent, do we need a motion to put that off? Or is that not on the most recent agenda?
It is on the most recent agenda. I move that we take item 8A, CCHS Capital Projects and postpone it until our May 11 meeting, unless there's one scheduled prior.
I just quickly speak to that. Sorry. Just, just to, can I quickly just speak to that? Let you know what I'm going to be doing for the next meeting?
Soon as there's.
I missed that, Court?
Soon as there's a second.
My second.
So thank you for taking this off the agenda today. I just need a little bit more time. What I'll be bringing to you is sort of just an update to my February 9th memo, as well as the drainage projects on the softball and baseball fields at the high school. I just wanted a little more time to work with the team and, and we'll have something in front of you then. Big picture, a big picture.
Thank you. And big picture means we'll be looking at anything we have to entertain before we close out fiscal '21, as well as next to that, a longer range plan that might be in the form of a five year. Am I correct?
Correct. Yep. And, and I'll, and I'll reshare my February 9th memo that we started just naming some small projects and some larger projects. And I'll just build off of that and get some input.
The other work I wanted to do was to be sure we go back to the school committee's subcommittee work of the previous years. The 17, 18 year, there was a standing subcommittee focused just on the high school campus. The 18, 19 year, there was a follow up one. I think it just makes sense to sort of recollect all that information with some new members on, update it with the projects that have come along since. The good news is the building's young enough. There still isn't too much maintenance, et cetera, to, to work on there. But we'll start to, to look forward on that as well. So.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, roll call?
Roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
I for both.
I said I for both.
I'll stop the I for region.
Many I for regions. This is just the region, right?
Oh, forgive me.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We're all for the region too then. Again.
Wilson for region. Thank you.
Okay. Heather. Okay. We're on then. And I'll, I'll say it's Alexa and I together. So I'll start off just with a quick intro and then I can share screen for a minute. It's exciting. We're doing this now. We're going to talk about the yearly evaluation process that we do with our superintendent. To me, it's exciting because it's an opportunity for us to, to thank Lori and validate what an amazing superintendent we have. And, and there's a whole process around this. So we've all talked about it before. We talked about it at the beginning of the year at a high level as we outlined her goals. And we agreed on a process. So what I'm going to do is pull up that process and review it. I've laid out a tentative timeline from between now and the end of the year when we present her review. We'll go through the form and again, at a somewhat high level, but do a little bit of a how to, because the form can be confusing the first time you're looking at it. And then just look at the actual reading descriptions. So, and at the beginning of the year, when we all, when we assigned ourselves to lots of different things, we assigned Alexa and myself to do this. So, and Eva's also helped with it a lot because she was involved last year and I dragged her in a little bit by mistake. Alexa and I are going to be primarily coordinating this process between now and the end of the year. So we'll go through this. And I want to say in case I forget later, we'll do somewhat high level today so that we're not taking a long time. But I'm also happy to spend individual time with anyone, you know, as you work through it, before you're looking at it, whatever it may be. Because especially for those newer members, it, it's a kind of weird, confusing form and process the first time you go through it. So I don't want this to seem like, oh my gosh, we're skimming through it and I don't get it. Because this is the big meeting. So I'm happy to spend individual time with anyone. I just want to put that out there.
And I just want to jump in before you, just to make the point.
Yeah.
I highly, I highly recommend.
I highly recommend, it is a really, it is a really weird and not friendly form. I'll just say that. So I highly recommend that you open it as soon as possible and pretend to go through it and you're going to have questions. So ask them as soon as possible because otherwise you're going to be sitting inside on the beautiful day.
It's a very good point.
Good point, yes.
And I'll validate that even just Heather and I's private kickoff meeting, I felt I got a private tutoring on this and I do feel it was helpful.
Okay.
To anyone who needs it.
Great. So I'm going to share screen now. Hopefully that's coming up. Okay. Can you all see the superintendent evaluation process document there? Is that big enough? Do you want me to zoom it a little?
If it's big enough for me, I'm blind, it's big enough for everyone.
Okay, there we go. Okay. So what I'll do, we'll stay high level at first because this is something we went through back in the fall. But as you all remember, there was the standard form that Desi provided in 2012, and then they provided a new one in 2019. We had the option of adopting it or not. We decided to adopt it. The primary difference is that in the indicators that we rate, we now specify focus indicators and choose those to rate instead of doing all of them, which makes a lot more sense because all of them is just a lot and gets confusing. So we adopted that, the process that we all agreed on. We've been through most of it as we know. We agreed on the goals. We did our mid-year review discussions in January, and now we're starting the spring part leading to the end of year evaluation, the final evaluation. So again, unless there are questions, I'll keep going to our timeline for now. So this is, everything that I just went through, we all agreed on and approved back in the fall. Now I'm showing you recommended dates and timeframes. So I want to make sure it makes sense to everybody. The first thing is that we use, well, first thing, everybody can do their, their own reviews, like Cynthia recommended. First official piece is that the superintendent always provides us something to, to show us what she has done all year towards her goals. This year, because she has been so organized and we've coordinated all together through the superintendent reports, the collection of superintendent reports actually becomes her automatic overview of everything she's done towards her goals. So she will collect those for us and those become kind of her end of year summary, as well as, and Dr. Hunter's talked about some other data that she'll provide, some surveys, some reports that have been pulled together. So by May 14th, she will provide to us basically a report. That's the collection of her superintendent reports as well as some supporting and related data. And that's for us to go through, you know, compare to the goals, et cetera. The goals we all have, and I sent out the other day, but I can always resend them if everybody, if anybody needs a copy of her goals again. So then the next piece is really important. Between May 17th and June 1st, every committee member will meet individually with Lori. This is a really important time. It's a great time to discuss what's gone on during the year, to ask any questions. It's also really important, if there are any concerns, that they come up here. It is only fair for us not to surprise her at the end, obviously, with some, you know, concern or criticism that hasn't come up first in person in order to discuss it and hash through it. So if there are any concerns, this is the time to bring them up during those meetings. And so that's why what Cynthia said is really important, to be starting to look at all of this now so that by the time you have your meeting with Dr. Hunter between the 17th and the 1st, you have a good feel for, for what your thoughts and any questions. So then between that meeting, or you can start it before, but by June 4th, everybody will fill out their own individual evaluation form. This form is attached here and I'll, I'll go through it in a minute. So I'll go through the high level, how, how you deal with it. But those need to be in by June 4th. And then between then and the 13th, Alexa and I have the fun job of synthesizing these. And so what we do is we take everybody's form, we kind of highlight for the main points, and we do a summary of each section. So in each section, we basically summarize the feedback from everybody. And that becomes the final summative evaluation. So it will address everybody's points, obviously not everybody's verbatim, but all of the themes and feedback that came out. We will send that out by the 13th, both to the committee and to Lori. And then on the 15th is when we have on our agendas scheduled to present the summit of evaluation. And that will be the end of our year. So that is the timeline before I move on. Any comments or questions on that?
Heather, can I just add? I am going to put the reports together and give you some other data to go with it. If there are specific things, and some of you mentioned things to me in January that are on my, on my to-do list and to, to include, but feel pleased, you know, let me know now so that I'm sure to be as thorough as you're hoping. I just want to be sure that invitation is there and don't, don't, don't hesitate at all to ask for things that you were hoping to see or expecting to see, or the goal makes you, you know, inclined would be useful. That way, you know, I can include it right off on the 14th. If after you see what I provide, you still have things you were hoping for, questions of, oh, do you have something that shows this? Or did this happen? And is there something to document it? Please let, you know, make that part of the, part of the process.
Definitely. Yeah. Thank you for mentioning that. I should have mentioned that. From others' questions.
Heather and Alexa?
Yes.
In terms of the, the work you're going to do on synthesizing the individual forms into one, I know that what's quantitative is, is information that probably you'd share by form of a range and an average. In terms of the, the comments or the narrative, do you pull together representative quotes or try to, try to rework it? And it's not a leading question. I, I just don't recall.
You know, depending on who I was working with, I've done it in different ways in the past. I think it's primarily, it's a combination of both. For the most part, I think we would look through all of the, you know, let's say, take a certain question, a certain standard, look through all seven answers to that question and highlight themes, but then also take a lot of quotes. So, you know, in the, in the rewriting, it's not necessarily putting into our own words as much as include, usually including quotes from all of them or from most of them, you know, depending on how they're wording and how much repetition there is. But putting into, putting into our own words, themes that come up a lot. You know, if the same theme comes up five times, just making sure that we word that clearly, that that's a theme.
And I would see quotes as necessary, and they can certainly be anonymous quotes.
They would all be anonymous.
Necessary to illustrate anything that we would synthesize so that members and the superintendent can be sure that they are founded or, you know, based on something very specific. But again, I think it's important for brevity and clarity to, to summarize them. And yes, like that will be something that we write, but then again, to illustrate what is, what is written, I think quotes are, would be, would be very helpful if not in necessary.
I think they are. And, and those quotes will be in quotes. So you will know what's coming directly, what's being pulled directly from somebody's individual evaluation. And like Alexa said, they will all be anonymous. We're not going to identify who said what purely that there are quotes.
All right. And you made the earlier point that we'll all have an individual time with, with Lori. So.
Right.
As with so many things, we should minimize unexpecteds because we're trying to communicate as effectively as we, as we do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Other comments or questions?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to add that even though just the overall evaluation, the summative evaluation is presented at the school committee meeting, the other evaluations of each member still becomes a public record. So, and it's not a secret, just, just if anyone wants to ever look at it, they do exist. So it doesn't go away. Our words are recorded. And, and I just wanted to add, Dr. Hunter is always very generous with her time, but making those appointments early, it doesn't seem that Ier is slowing down might be helpful.
Definitely. That is very true. And Lori, maybe we can ask Aaron to help coordinate that with all of us so that.
Yeah, that first email will be from Aaron.
Okay, good. We'll make sure we get us all on your calendar early. And we did try to create a long window there so that they're not, she's, she's not, you know, slammed with all of us in one week. But at the same time, if you can, you know, if you can work it into your schedule earlier is probably better than later so that you have plenty of time to meet first and then write. Okay. Other comments or questions? All right. If not, I'm going to stop. I will consider just, if, if there are any more comments, we'll consider this then our accepted timeline and these will be our dates. I can send out a review of them later so you know what your deadlines and everything are. But we will consider that accepted and I'm going to go on to the next one. Now we will go through the actual form. And oops, in my sharing, it all moved around. Here we go. Okay. Are you seeing the form? Yeah. Okay. Oh, I am too. There we go. Okay. So this is the form provided by Desi. Desi, I'm going to do my best to walk you through it so that it doesn't seem too confusing. At a high level, this form basically presents kind of the high level summary ratings and data first, which makes sense from the reader's perspective. Actually, to some extent, maybe it's designed for easy readership of the, the superintendents or who's being evaluated. That means as those filling it in, we don't actually start at the beginning, which is what can seem a little confusing or counterintuitive at first. What you're seeing in step one and step two are the high level kind of summary ratings for each of these categories of goals and each of the standards. Before you can actually fill those in, you need to do all the indicators and goals that build up to those. So as you're filling it out, you're going to skip right over the first page and actually skip right over the second page. The second page, in a way, is the, the biggest and most important, that where it says step three, rate overall summit of performance. That is your, your personal overall rating for the superintendent. So everything else adds up to that. So that's what you're going to do last. And step four, the comments relating to it. So again, you're going to save this one until last and you're going to move on and basically start on page, we're on three now, right? You're going to start on page three. So when you look at the overall form, the rest of it is, is broken out into two different types of rating. One is specifically on the superintendent's goals that we have all agreed to at the beginning of the year. That's this part on page three and going into page four. The next, and I'll come back to this, the next are the four standards, which are just general performance standards for a superintendent. And then we'll go through those. So let me go back to the goals first. Those are the two parts, basically the two sections that you're going to be filling out. And you rate the meets slightly differently. So in goals, I have pre-populated this with each of the specific goals that we all agreed on for Dr. Hunter in the fall. In addition, we've referenced the focus indicators. That will become more relevant down below when we're looking at the standards, but it's at least a reference point that connects them. It'll make more sense when you look at the standards. So for each of these, the goal has a category first on the left. That is relevant. That category becomes relevant when you go back up to the first page because there are three categories of goals and then you're summarizing into a category. So what you're going to do is each of these individually, and then when you go back to the first page, you're going to look at those three student learning goals and summarize those into one student learning goals rating, et cetera. The same for the next ones. So for each one, you have options, obviously, of everything from did not meet up to exceeded. What we agreed, what we've agreed to in the past was that the standard of met basically means met to the extent possible, you know? And I think this came up to, in a big way last year when COVID hit, right? There, there were lots of things that we had to look at and say, well, okay, this got a little derailed during COVID, but she was on track or at the point where we were supposed to be when that happened, et cetera. So I think that's important to keep in mind is that when we say met, for the most of these, it will be pretty clear. But sometimes you have to look at it through a lens of met to the extent possible. Maybe there was some outside factor that means that it didn't happen according to the exact wording, but we did it differently. And if differently accomplished the goal, then that's met even if it's not exactly to the wording there, right? So, so that's just an important lens to keep in mind that we're looking at the spirit of the goal, not necessarily every word if, if, if the wording becomes irrelevant somehow. So you have your three student learning goals. I'm not going to go through each one because we've been through all the goals before. On the full goal sheet that I've sent out, each of these has breakout steps below them, but these are the high level goals here in the, in the various areas. So the three student learning goals, then the three professional practice goals, sorry, two professional practice goals, and then three district improvement goals. All of those you will rate individually. And then, like I said, when you're done, you will go back up to the top, sorry to be scrolling, but I'm going to show you while we're talking about it, and see how here in step one, you had professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. And so you will take the ratings from, let's say, the three professional practice ones, average them and, and put it there as the high level rating for that category. Okay. Is that all clear on the goal rating part of it before I move on? Okay. I'm happy to go faster or slower if I'm either boring you or, or skimming over detail too much.
I appreciate the way you're handling it.
Okay, great. I've gone through this process before and this is, you going at this pace is really good for me.
Okay, good. I'm glad. I'm glad. All right. So it means a little more.
Doesn't it make you want to recreate the form yourself? We all had that conversation. Maybe in our free time some summer we'll regroup it.
I know. It's tempting.
It is not user friendly. I hadn't looked at it in a while until Heather pulled it back at me.
I know. And you realize, well, I remember the first time I looked at it, I thought, where do I begin here? It's just, yeah. So anyway, hopefully it's helpful. And again, if you haven't used it before, I'm more than happy to spend time with any of, you know, anyone individually because, because I know it's a little weird to go through. Okay. So here's the next section, which is the four performance standards. And again, these are, for lack of a better term, generic performance standards. They're not specific to Lori. We didn't make them up. They're coming from Desi. What we did was specify what the goals relate to. So each of the goals up top have a few, have references to, you know, 1B, 2C, what various indicators. Under all of these standards, there are, you know, six in, different in each, but let's say six to eight indicators. The indicators are, are more specific. So standard one is instructional leadership. Under instructional leadership, we have our six here or seven, including last one, indicators. Instead of spending time on all of them, because not all of them are ones that we particularly want to focus on, we have our focus indicators highlighted. And so what I did was I added my blue arrow and then I graded out the ones that are not our focus indicators so that it's very clear here what you're filling out in looking at this form. So you don't even need to fill out a rating for 1A because it's not a focus indicator.
And Heather, these focus indicators were what, just to jog my memory, are what we collaboratively decided on as a committee, like when, like in September?
In October, we agreed on all of this. October into November.
Right. So these, so even though these aren't our indicators, you know, the, what we, the way we've customized it is by focusing on these one, two, three, four specific indicators.
Right. And we chose those four, sorry, I'm going to scroll.
Based on the goals.
By going up, exactly. Because in these goals of Lori's, we have the relevancy here in focus indicators. So in student learning goal one, there is relevancy to standard one indicator B, standard two indicator A, right, exactly. And so basically I went through all of these listed in these boxes and then highlighted them down below.
Fantastic.
So any indicator that has a relevancy to the goals that we specified is then highlighted down here for us to specify a rating.
Right. With your cute arrows.
Is, is that clear? I want to make sure that's understandable to everybody. Is that clear?
I'm good so far, but I want you to speak specifically to 1F.
1F, student learning. Oh, the one that does not have, the one that does not have a rating. So that is because it's really based on data and measures and it's not really up to us to decide how our students performing. So it, so we have goals that are relevant to it. But really, that's, that's a bunch, that's related to data that, that's not really up to us to decide.
Why, I'm, I'm just curious why we declared it a focus if we're declaring it impossible?
Well, I think it's not that as much that, it's that it's relevant to some of what Lori's doing. So if we look at Lori's goals, that student learning is relevant to those goals. And so I think it's important that we highlight it just so that we know that in a way, it was more important to approving her goals than it is to the evaluation because it was important that stooling, student learning was a part of her goals. Right? And I'm, I would think, so Lori, you know, maybe some of the data that you're going to share with us in our packet will have to do with student learning. And therefore that's the, you know, that's the data there.
I, I read this to mean we're paying attention to it, but we're not rating it.
Yeah.
I like that. Yeah.
I think that makes sense. Yep.
Heather, is this different from last year? Did not, we not have this goal? Did we not rate it?
This is a new one. It didn't, I think, don't quote me, I think it didn't exist in the last form. And now that they put it in, they didn't have it as a rating. Is that correct? Lori, do you remember?
I think it's, it, it's evolved is the answer. Between the combination of what used to be district determined measures when this process first came out and that was what student learning was based on, where these common assessments we were all going to use and measure, plus MCAS, of course. I think as that sort of, that never came to be with the district determined measures. And then I think with the revised superintendent's rubric, it, it just evolved into, to not having the rating per se based on, I really think it's meant to, let me qualify it this way, the teachers don't get rated on exactly where their kids are on MCAS. That's not how our state approaches data. And that's been a big part of the discussion of this process. I think it's meant to reflect that as much as anything, that it's, you're not getting, you're not setting a, a goal to have kids get to a certain level and you're then going to be proficient or not based on whether kids accomplish that goal. Some states weight the data very, very heavily and it's half of your evaluation as to whether the kids meet your goal or not. So I think it's meant to be the, the balance that's evolved there. That's my takeaway on why it's written the way it is.
Thank you.
Yep. Makes sense. So going through the, the rest of it is quicker to go through because now this is all the same. Standard two is management and operations. We have two focus indicators in this one. Family and community engagement. We have another two focus indicators there. And the last one, professional culture, another two focus indicators there. So those are the areas that we're going to rate under each of these. There's a space for comments. You know, checking boxes is one thing, but it's the comments that, that are really valuable, I think, especially to the superintendent. And we will look at all of those. And again, when we are aggregating all of this, we will take each, take each section, we'll kind of average the scores on the, of the checkboxes, of course, and find the, the average and where it lands. But it's the comments where we will find themes and use quotes, et cetera. I think that's the last page. There's nothing else. So once you've done that, I'm sorry.
Nope, you go first.
So once we have, once you've filled out all of that, then again, you're going to go backwards, back up to your top page. And now you get back to page one. And again, you have the high levels here. So you have that standard one, standard two, standard three, standard four, each of those. And you're going to take your average ratings within each of those standards and give the standard a rating. Okay. In terms of these ratings, I'm going to come back to those in a minute. I have a separate sheet that actually goes, that describes each of the ratings so we can figure out how to rate. So I'm sure that's a question, but put that on hold for a second while we just look at kind of process. Once you've done all of that, now you have your high level goal analysis, your high level standard ratings, and you have the last page to do, page two. And here's where you're going to give your overall summative performance rating and your overall comments. And then you're done. So process wise, any questions? Or comments? Okay, good. That's our form. I will close out of that then. We're going to stop sharing and I have one more to show you because we'll look at ratings now. Okay, let me just find the next one. It was up here. Here we go. Okay, thought they were all on top and then they weren't. Okay, so now, oops, now I have to find it. All right, everybody see rating the superintendent's performance against standards? Okay, you can see that?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Okay, so this is against the standards. Obviously, the, in goals, it's a little more clear. It's, you know, met, close to met, exceeded, whatever it may be. These, I think, are a little more, I don't know if they're more, they're a little more subjective and therefore difficult to define sometimes. So the ratings against the standards. Proficient is understood to be the, the most common and fully satisfactory rating. This is what basically all administrators are going for, to be at least proficient in everything that they're doing. It is considered to be a good rigorous expected level of performance. And I would, I would also point out that it means overall proficient. It doesn't mean, you know, perfection in every area. You know, there might be questions or slight concerns here and there, but I think the big question is, is our superintendent proficient, generally proficient in this area, generally proficient as a superintendent? You know, even if there are maybe a few things to look at and discuss here and there. Exemplary is above and beyond that. So it's a rating for something where we see Dr. Hunter as a model for leaders regionally or statewide or anywhere. So it's something where she has gone above and beyond what would be expected of the typical superintendent. Needs improvement is, is an area that needs some looking at. And again, I point this out because I think some of our, I don't even want to say debates, but misunderstandings in, in the past, when different members look at these is, well, does that mean that, you know, there was one little thing that maybe wasn't perfect and so therefore it could use improvement? Or, or does this mean a real issue? And I think it's important to point out that needs improvement means, is a little bit more of a red flag. It means, okay, we have some concerns about this area of leadership. And that's, that's kind of how it's seen in the, in the overall reading.
So Heather, like to me, I'm thinking like, my kid's report card, right? Like for this, to me, sort of tracks to the elementary level, like, um, report cards that kids, where proficient is like, if you're hanging with the class and you're meeting the expectations, you're reading at grade level and like, you're not a math star, but you're, you get addition and subtraction and you're in second grade, you're proficient. And like, then there's like rating two, which is like, hey, you know, needs improvement. We are flagging you and maybe you need some like tier one interventions. Look at me, like sped liaison, sped liaison terms, you know, you need a tier one intervention at this point. Like, are we thinking of it like that?
I, I have a strong disagreement with.
Okay, okay, good. No, I, that's, I mean, I'm asking, like, to me, that's where my mind is going.
That's the misunderstanding, I think, in doing this work.
Talking about it.
I think Heather did capture pretty well when she explained proficient. And if you read the example, I think it really doesn't track to what I would think of as classroom ratings. Because proficient has a higher standard than I think it wouldn't, and what I consider proficient. And there's more, often there's more, there's only four here. And unsatisfactory is such a, you know, there's just, there's really three, I think, available to me, honestly. Because unsatisfactory is such a bold, a bold statement.
Yes, that is right.
But I think needs improvement, I think what Heather was saying, it is you can't just cherry pick one thing, like, you know, your punctuation wasn't really good in one of the reports for something we did. It's always very good, but I'm just saying, you know, something that would be ridiculous, right, to, to pick that. But I think it, it's really, really hard to distinguish, I think, between proficient and needs improvement.
Right, that's what I feel. So how to do it?
I think that needs improvement isn't, it doesn't warrant getting pulled out and needing extra instruction from a consultant or something. You know, that's what it kind of sounds like, the way you describe it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, because it says, for new, no, for not new, you know, it's just saying that, you know, there could be some work done in this area. But I, I don't think it's as, as dramatic as the unsatisf, it's, it's really tough, like Heather said in the beginning. It's, it's very nuanced and I think everybody has to put, you know, you have to put a lot of thought into it when you, you know, I, I have to say just between the three categories because I think unsatisfactory for us just doesn't, but you know, that, that's up to the individual. But it, it's really nuanced. I mean, I'm sure for educators, you know, when you don't have data, just sort of trying to grade students, it's, it's, again, it's very nuanced.
It is hard. And I think that's why it's important to have this conversation because it's also important, important to all be on the same page.
Yeah.
You know, because if, if somebody says, oh, I need improvement is a real red flag and that means you need intervention and then Cynthia doesn't think that gives and needs improvement, well, then all of a sudden it looks really bad for Lori, right? And.
Meaning the same things.
Right. So I think we have to kind of agree on, on a standard here to the extent that we can. How exactly you specify that? And, and maybe it's somewhere kind of in between the, you know, these, these levels that we're talking about. I mean, I think you want to, my personal take is maybe that it does, you know, a needs improvement doesn't have to be so extreme that it means, oh my gosh, we need an intervention here.
Right.
But at the same time that you want to think about it because it is, because it's a reflection on Dr. Hunter and we don't, you know, we don't want to all of a sudden feel like we're peppering her with needs improvement all over because of little things.
Yeah, someone, when, when we did, when I did my first one, someone I, who had been on the school committee for a while said, don't fear the needs improvement, right? Like it's, it's, it, it's just, it's a nudge more than, more than a giant flag being waved about something that, that most, you know, and it, it's not like rating on, you know, on Yelp or something where you want to give five because you can give four, that, that it's, it's like, oh my God, there was food poisoning there kind of, right? It's, it, they, we have to be, you, you really take that word exemplary and treat it for, for its value as exemplary. And, and the, the, the profession means it, like you did a great job. Exemplary is, at least what I've understood is that it's so much more. And, and, and needs improvement is there is something that, that could have been better. And that's true for anybody's performance on any rate. It's not expected that necessarily that everything's going to be exemplary or, you know.
Well, and I think too, it makes the qualitative sections where, to Court's point, we can pull quotes to demonstrate and support the rating. It makes those qualitative areas important. And I think just use them so that we can get a sense for, you know, where we're seeing these. It will help us to inform what we mean by our rating.
The, the little bit I have to say is, I agree, the instrument itself is kind of clunky, but it's ours. And these three descriptors, proficient, exemplary and improvement, I think are worded in a, in a way that works for me. I, I think some care went into this. And for me, if I had to paraphrase needs improvement, it's, please pay attention to this one next year.
I, I, I agree with, with, with Court. I think the definitions are, are clear and I am, this is more food for thought, really. This is my first evaluation, like Alexa. So it's more technicalities than any preconceived ideas or, or plan. So proficient, I see the word rigorous there. And I don't see, as you said, Heather, it's okay if there's questions here and questions there that are not really working. Sorry if I mis, didn't paraphrase your words correctly. But for me, proficient would not have, would not have any concerns. It's not exemplary, but proficient does not have concerns. And also my definition or my understanding of needs improvement, it's always been that needs improvement for me is associated with setting goals, which is perfectly normal and healthy because cannot, if we tell the, the, the person we're evaluating, again, this is in, in general technicalities. If there is no area that needs improvement, then there's no goal setting for the following year. So for me, needs improvement is just a direction of, for goal setting. That's how I understand it. And it's not like, it's by no means a red flag, is nowhere near a red flag for me.
So we're all in agreement that? Yeah.
Yeah, I want to thank Heather and Alexa for putting this together for us. Even though those, some of us have done this before, I think resetting it every year is, is necessary for us and fair for the process.
I think it is. And I know you're wrapping up, I was just trying to comment and realized I was on mute. I just want to make sure that we're not kind of each going in different directions because I think I just heard some different things from each of us. Because needs improvement as a way to establish goal setting is different from I have a concern. And so I, I just want to make sure that we are all kind of on the same page here. But I completely get you and, and agree with you in terms of a needs improvement is a, is a good way to focus goals. That obviously if there is something that needs improvement, that should be a goal for next year or a focus area, whatever it may be, whether it's a high level goal. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to use that as a way to determine goals. There could be something that's going great this year that continues to be a district goal next year, but that doesn't mean it needs improvement now. So I just, I just want to make sure we're on the same page there. I wouldn't want to use needs improvement as a way to say, okay, this is what we want to keep working on next year and that is, and so I'll call those needs improvements so that they become goals. I think goal setting can happen individually from that. Does, does that make sense?
I think, I think if I, correct me if I'm wrong again, I think that most of us do agree on that needs improvement definition, that it's not problematic. I think we are on the same.
Sure, it all says that it's not unsatisfactory. I think where I struggle with is, is again, and I'm too nuanced, I, I, I'm sure of it, but where you say improvement is necessary, and that's, that's their wording, not mine, and expected. So like, I can't think of a good example off the top of my head, but that's where I do, I, I, I recognize that it's not unsatisfactory at this time, also their words. But, but I think it is, I, I think yes, it's. But, but I think it is, I, I think, yes, it's not necessarily to be taken as a poor rating. But I think it needs, I guess, just, I think, be mindful and considerate of that one sentence, that you, that you have to believe that improvement is necessary and expected. Not just like, eh, she's all right, like, she's all right, but she could be marginally better. Necessary and expected, to me, has some gravitas to it. That, and, and that was the sentence to me that prompted, you know, my first inclination as to how these ratings looked. And, and I thank Cynthia, because you sent me on a new track, which is great. But I still, I don't know, maybe I'm just being too freaking literal.
I think it's more sense when you do your write-ups, when you start writing and, and you start, if you, if you have issues that come up while you're writing, right? So that you say, oh, here's something that could have been, if, if, if you're going towards those kinds of words and thoughts sometimes, then it's easier after you do your write-up to do the rating. Right? If your, if your write-up is, you know, I can't believe how well this was managed, and this, you know, I, I wouldn't have envisioned and looking at other districts, like this was a model of something, then you're, you're in the exemplary. If you're, if it's, everything went great, and, and there were no major issues, then you're in the proficient. And if there are, here's something that I saw the superintendent struggling with, or that it felt didn't always come across as well as it, you know, or whatever. I think when you do the write-ups, you, you, it's much easier to then check the boxes. Would other people agree?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think that's very helpful, the way you said it, Sarah.
Very abstract, this.
Right, and I've just never done it, so.
Yeah, it's a journey.
Thanks. Can't wait.
This might be.
Could I, I hate that, this is about me, but I wanted to offer one piece of the teacher evaluation.
That's funny, I was just going to ask about that, and I was about to say.
Just because it's from the same set of regs, and I don't know, just so you hear the frame of reference that we have as educators on the other side. A teacher who is needs improvement overall in standards one and two cannot get professional status, and they must go on a directed growth plan, because the, the stakes get much higher, that it has to get better. Or there's, there's potential of bigger consequences. Overall, not down in the individual elements and indicators, but if it's an overall needs improvement, there are some pretty significant stakes attached. I've, I've tried to hear these conversations and put that aside in the past. But just frame of reference for what the regulations say for teachers.
I wonder if that, the stakes there are more for the school, because when you decide to, you said that an evaluation or performance warrants a professional status, then you're committing to this teacher for a number of years. Is that an accurate understanding of the stakes, the high stakes? Because if you take them on for a number of years with the professional status, knowing that they had these weaknesses and didn't point them out, then it's, it's a responsibility that you have to live with for years.
I suppose, I suppose. Yeah, I can't say for sure that that's the intent, because we think of it more, I'm hesitating, because we think of it more of an annual process, regardless of where people are at. Developing educators go on a one-year plan versus professional status goes on a two-year plan. So there are, are there nuances that contribute?
I think that's also relevant in the sense that this is part of, this is part of, this evaluation process is standard as part of the educational world here. And I think we, it's one thing for us to debate these things and the nuances. But if there's kind of a common industry standard understanding of what needs improvement means, I think we have to acknowledge that and be aware of it. And like Lori said, it's not the individual indicators. And, and I'm, you know, I don't want to sound like I'm standing here saying, you know, don't use any needs improvement. I'm not, really never trying to say that. I just want to make sure we have a common understanding. But I do think that's important, if a, if a high level standard is called needs improvement, that in the educational world professionally, when, you know, maybe outsiders are looking at it, it is considered somewhat of a red flag. I think that's important, just for us to acknowledge.
Love that, yeah.
Okay, Heather, I'm reminiscing back to October, and I think this is very similar to the discussion that we had. And forgive me for saying this, from my perspective, it feels like you're saying, don't say needs improvement.
I wanted to just give you the reference for what the teachers have, by, by regulation. Just, and again, I'm uncomfortable, because this is about me, and that is not at all what I'm saying, nor is it what's happened in the past. So I, I hope you reflect on the way you want to approach it. It's important that I know what you're thinking when you do it, though, so I understand what message you're trying to send.
Absolutely, this is.
And that, that's, I think, what we're trying to accomplish here, because it, it's hard with all of you to have it come with the same messaging. So that's, that's all, and maybe a lot of that's got to be through the dialogue. I guess while we're on, this is the most, one of the most important things that happens for me all year. So I just want to stress the, the value I put in this and how much it matters.
I, if I may, I just wanted to add that during the MAS C presentation, this, we usually spent actually a good amount of time explaining that the, the rating system and, and that difference between the needs improvement and proficient. Because it, it seems that, that identifying what it really means is, is, is a struggle for a lot of school committee members. So I remember in those discussions, you know, getting that explanation that needs improvement, we should not be confusing with, there, there are, there is work that is continuously done, that is not finished in, in just one cycle. And just because this work is, is, is not completed, doesn't mean that the superintendent needs to, needs improvement. It, it doesn't coincide with, coincide with that rating. It, it's, I don't know if I, if I'm even explaining it sufficiently, but that relationship to, to, to work that.
Eva, do you think it would be worth Heather or I reaching out to Dorothy or, like, rep lady to get some clarification?
I, I actually do, because I remember at, when I, when, when I was onboarding for the first year, this was also, in my mind, a question, and this was also a, a, a point of discussion. So it wasn't, you know, it was, we also didn't skim right through it. And it seems that, you know, we do the superintendent evaluation every year, but it's not an easy form. It's not, you know, it's not self-explanatory, and then you are, you know, trying to figure out the nuances. So it, it might be worth reaching out to, to MAS C, to, to.
I think that's a good idea. We'll do that. Alexa, you and I can coordinate, and we'll do that.
Correct. They do have workshop. So I think most of us did take that evaluation workshop with MAS C, right? I, I just want to say, it is 7:30. I would have to excuse myself.
Okay, before you go, I just wanted to say one thing, Fatah, I know it's 7:30. I only wanted to say to you, specifically apologies to you if it, if you took this as, you know, me telling you how to rate or not what to do. That was not the point at all. It's only that in the past years, I have, we have experienced discrepancies where people rated very differently. And so I just really wanted to get us all on the same page, so.
No apologies needed at all, because I was presenting a perspective. No apologies needed. We're brainstorming.
Okay.
Yeah, no, none, no offense taken, absolutely.
All right, thank you, and have a good evening, Fatah.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Fatah.
Okay, I think, especially given that we're down one, I think we'll wrap that up then, and Alexa and I will follow up with Dorothy, and maybe bring back some more feedback.
And that wouldn't violate open meeting law for sharing information, like if Dorothy gives further explanation, it's something maybe, just, well, I guess we still have a good.
We can forward what she sends to everybody.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Right, exactly. We shouldn't then say, here's what I think she's saying.
Right, 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 right. But I'm just thinking, like, so that it could inform discussion for next time. If we get it quickly, I'll, I'll pass it.
Definitely, yeah.
Awesome.
And I just sent a link to the two of you to EdC webpage with five videos MAS C made on reviewing, and I haven't seen them before. Have you all seen them?
I looked at some of them, actually. That's funny you say that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll share some of that with everyone also.
Question, Heather, about the logistics. So I just looked at our remaining meetings for this fiscal year. And we don't have the 15th on our meeting list. Are we adding a meeting?
I thought we did. I, that was when it was scheduled in an email that Sarah sent out to all of us, right?
I think we were pulling the 22nd back to the 15th, so that it happens before school is out, to facilitate vacations for Jared and I.
Yep, I was going to say, we have still probably a good amount of material to move through this year. And I'm just, this takes up basically, I think, most of the meeting. I think we're disingenuous if we try to slide in any other large amount of material. So I leave it to the chairs to balance all this out. And I agree, my other comment was going to be, I would like us to, as soon as possible, set the summer meeting schedule.
Good idea.
And not wait until June, and, because I want people, you know, I, you know, I don't think we need a lot of meetings, or we need guidance from Lori to help us know about, you know, how much reentry meeting time we need for this year versus.
A lot less than last year.
Right.
I think in July, it's pretty minimal, I would, I would say, maybe one meeting, just that off the top of my head, but.
Yeah.
About it, yeah.
And as a new committee, I think we do need a workshop. I think that's really important. It's not a lot of new members, but still, it's a, it's a new committee, so. So I'll just leave that, you know, I, I know we tried to set it with the new committee in June, but there's going to be so much else going on.
At some point, you're all going to be in the same room together, which I'm really excited about, I have to say. I think that's a big positive.
Okay. So, can I just confirm? So I have in my meetings, notwithstanding the potential for that meeting on the 4th, I have the 11th, is that still correct of May?
We have the 11th correct.
I have the 25th of May? Marvelous. I have the 8th of June, and then now the 15th of June.
Correct.
But our website doesn't say that.
Got it. All right.
Update that.
We will update that tomorrow.
Just be sure that we can fit everything in without having six-hour meetings.
What are you implying?
Okay, well, thank you, Alexa and Heather. Look forward to seeing what, what Dorothy has for us. Clarification, yeah. And.
And thank all of you. I appreciate how much you're wrestling with all this. So, thank you.
It's important. And, and it's time for action items. Edco.
So, let me get it pulled up. I guess I'll preface with a little context on where we are with Edco. Obviously, we're making our way through dissolution. And really, the timely piece is addressing the FY21 deficit, which is very significant. And so districts are each getting through our assessments and percentage of the collaborative being assessed based on that current deficit, which I don't have in front of me, but it's around $2 million at this point. So we have been invoiced for approximately, I could pull the actual numbers up and get them to you, approximately $70,000 per district. Much of our discussion as of late as a board has been trying to give districts options on when and how to pay the, the invoices in Jared's way, and that we would prefer, just as some others did, that we would like to pay it in FY21. Some districts may think may be in better standing to do it in FY22. So as a board, we're trying to create structures that allow options. So that's what this is intending. The SEFRS fund is in, I'll equate it to a revolving account that was a one-purpose-only donation prior to. We've since changed the bylaw around the use of the fund and have been using it operationally. We've used all of it. And so this is meant to give district, it's meant to give Edco a vehicle to take in the money in FY21. So the districts would pay their assessment, it would go into this SEFRS fund, and then they could draw on it to utilize out the FY21, you know, needs. I do expect there'll be another round of invoices coming before we're finished, as they start closing more and more things out. But, so each district had to bring the vote forward so that we could all agree that the SEFRS fund could be a piece of the cash flow, essentially. And so that's what you're voting tonight, is that we could contribute, all districts could contribute to the SEFRS fund in FY21, and then the executive director could continue to pay out the operational costs that we have. Just other quick updates is, there's a lot of moving pieces and still a lot of unknowns. I am joining the finance subcommittee that meets next week, who is kind of navigating the first rounds of discussions on a number of topics. So that'll keep me close and give me some voice there, and then we're going to keep moving. It's complicated. I guess I'll leave it at that. There's a lot of layers to the dissolution process. So this is more of a procedural, you're, you're allowing, you're allowing funds to go into that account and then to be used for FY21.
Need, I need help on the, on the motion, Lori. So a couple of questions. I know I've spent some time on this before.
Yeah.
Forgive me if any of these are repeats. Is it necessary to direct our monies through the SEFRS fund and not direct it straight to an operating fund maintained by Edco?
It's, it's comparable to the region. There's no way to do that. So you've got to do the, another, another stopping point for the funds, or give permission to them and have them be allocated. What we're trying to do here is increase revenue, essentially. And we can't change the fiscal year '21 budget without a vote of every, every school committee. This is in the bylaw of Edco, that the board doesn't have the authority to change it on their own without it going processed through. I'll be honest, Court, part of my answer is, every meeting we have, we're getting direction on one thing, and sometimes we're getting new direction on the same topic. So it can be very confusing, to say the least.
So this, this reference to amendment in the budget is specifically the Edco budget.
Yes.
But we don't, we don't vote on that budget. We simply accept fees because we are members. So it's a little unusual. We're amending a budget that we didn't adopt in the first place.
I know.
All right, just want to make it clear what.
I totally agree, and am following what I was asked to do. They provided us the language even. Edco's counsel.
The practical result is, one, that Edco can do this. And number two, that our finance director will redirect about $70,000 from each of the district's fiscal '21 accounts from where he might have directed it come June 30th to now, the SEFRS fund to, in effect, front-load some of the costs that we're going to ultimately have to incur.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll separate those two things. The vote you're taking allows the Edco side of that process to work. We actually still have ability here to not do it in FY21. If we chose to, we, we're going to recommend that you do. But what it does on the Edco side is allow for the increased assessments, the use of the SEFRS fund to take in those assessments. the use of the SEFRS fund to take in those assessments and then to pay them out to the operational budget. It's all process for Edco that you're approving tonight versus the actual invoices we got, which we're thinking we can tell you about and then run through the warrant process for approval, unless you want to do otherwise. We hadn't gotten that far yet. That's more of your purview, for sure, on how and when we pay those bills.
All right, I'm content with it. I'm not speaking for anybody else. Thank you for that clarification.
No, you're welcome. Those are great questions. It's very confusing.
But you might say this, can the amount change from what we are voting on today?
Yeah, that's why it's written as increased assessments, without it being, it's referenced in April 15th. If it goes up again, I guess I'm unclear as to what they're going to need to do if it goes up again. The April 15th memo is the 70, approximately 70,000 each.
Remind us, Mr. Richard is a CFO?
He is there, I forget what title. We don't have a business manager at Edco right now. It's a consulting firm that comes in and takes it on in lieu of a business manager. So he is the one doing all the books.
Thank you. Forgive me, Cynthia, I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna say, what's your, I mean, could this double? Could it triple this year?
They're assessing liabilities right now, so I can't say I'm sure. They're trying to put as many liabilities, well, they're trying to put as many liabilities out as they possibly can, so there are options to pay as much as possible in FY21, knowing districts have a sense of what they have for funds versus some of the unknowns coming up in the coming years.
But it sounds like, in terms of unknowns for this year, if it changes, let's say it doubled or tripled, like Cynthia just said, we wouldn't necessarily have to pay all of that this year. We could conceivably push off some of it, right? Okay.
So this is just the operational deficit. What they're trying to now navigate is the assessments of the liabilities that we have as we dissolve. So that's the part that's not clear yet as they go through some of those outstanding.
So it is 100% clear that if this did go up, I'll just restate what Heather said, that we would not need to pay it in FY21?
I know that is what I am verbally being told, is we will have options.
This sounds a little like, I don't know. But you'll have a report to us.
I'll remind you, our attorney is present at every meeting and an executive session with me because it's so confusing. So this came forward with her knowledge and.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll get an update next meeting.
You're gonna get a lot of updates, yeah.
That's fine, okay. It just sounds to the public a little concerning, to say the least.
It is concerning. And Sarah, why, again, at any point, you've had the pleasure of.
The whole thing is concerning, so there's, but this is a good, it's a strategy to afford some flexibility and to figure out the best way to handle the liabilities.
So as I read it, this motion gives Edco this prerogative, but doesn't do anything else by way of a mandate to us at this point in time.
Correct.
Exactly.
That is correct.
Given that, I'd like to propose that the school committee approve the amendment to the Edco fiscal year 2021 budget and thereby to increase assessments as outlined in Mr. Richard's April 15, 2021 budget update, and to include restoration of SEFRS funds used for operational costs in fiscal '21 as determined by the executive director.
Second for both.
Go for it. All yours, Cynthia.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
You have just an eye for both.
Who's eye for both?
That eye for both.
Most of you, for region.
Reading for both.
Wilson for region. Thank you. I believe now we can adjourn to executive session with no intent to return to open session.
I'll read it if you wish.
That'd be great.
That the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into an executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions with all non-union personnel and purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with collective bargaining units, Concord Teachers Association, Concord Carlisle Association, Local 1703, State Council 93, AFL-CIO, CPS Building Service Workers, CCA Building Service Workers, Maintenance, and not to return to open session.
Second for both.
Roll call.
Anderson, eye for both.
Eye for both.
Eye for both.
Most of you, for region.
Reading for both.
Wilson for region. See you all there.
See you there.
Good night to the public.